Welcome to your town meeting. The town clerk has informed me that we have met a quorum of 50 people at the last count. I declare the 2019 annual town meeting now in session. To honor the work that our service members do every day for our country, our invocation will be read by Long Meadow resident Stephen Marchak, retired from the U.S. Navy and moved to Long Meadow in 2000. His two children have graduated from Long Meadow High School and he previously worked for Intel. He is now retired. Will you help me welcome Mr. Marchak?
We have come together in civil assembly as a community in a tradition that is older than our Commonwealth itself. We come together to make decisions about our community. As we deliberate, let us advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember that there is an immense gap between saying "I am right" and saying "I believe I am right," and that our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people with hopes and dreams, as true and as high as ours. And let us remember that, in the end, caring for each other and our community is of far greater importance than any difference we may have.
Now I invite Ashley O'Farrell to come to the front, and I invite all who wish to do so to rise and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the National Anthem Star Spangled Banner shall be performed by Ekin Tori, directed by Scott Halligan. The students are Varsha Athreya, Sam Brock, Noah Damaris, Savannah Martin, Cal Nevu, Ashley O'Farrell, Leah Rosenman, Ruby Shay, Max Waslick, and Emily Yesu. Thank you very much. So as I said before, welcome to any visitors and first-time voters. I offer you a special welcome. As usual, some brief housekeeping announcements and rules of procedure before we get to discussion of the warrant articles. First of all, safety. If there's any emergency, please note the exits to behind me, to in the back. If you need a hearing assistive device, please inform a teller, somebody with the red lanyard, or somebody at one of the clerk's desks, and we shall loan you one. Visitors may sit in the visitors' section, and obviously, children may sit with their parents or guardians. If we need to hear from any non-voters with expertise or specialized knowledge, I will permit some non-voters to speak, and those include town employees regarding issues relevant to their departments. No other non-voter has been given permission. Let's see. So the back of the warrant has all of the rules or procedures that we will follow. There may be some special motions tonight. If at any point you don't understand what is happening, please ask, and I will guide you through the rules. And as usual, to speak, please wait for recognition for me, and then state your name and address. Motions to limit or extend debate require a two-thirds majority, and our bylaws require that if residents want to stop debate, they can only move to do so after at least five have spoken in favor and five against, and the presumption is speakers from the floor, not the main mover of a motion. If you'd like to speak against a motion, you can go to the microphone that is marked with the red " opposed." If you have a question or several questions, go to the yellow microphone. Also, if you're making a motion, go to that yellow microphone. If you'd like to speak in favor of a motion, go to the microphone that's marked "green." And I will alternate among each of the microphones. Whenever possible, I will try to recognize somebody who has not yet spoken. There's no cross-examination, so if you have all of your questions, ask them all at once, please, and I will direct them to the person who can answer it. Kindly try to keep your remarks as brief as possible, about two minutes or so, and all remarks should be concise and civil. We have an awards presentation, I believe. Mr. Gold, you have the special -- or is it Mr. Crane? Who is doing the awards?
The recognition list.
The recognition list? Yep.
We'd just like to acknowledge the service of employees who have been with the town government for a while and recently left town service. From the accounting department, Christopher Caputo; from the adult center, Elaine Iyan; from the building department, Walter Klum; from the Department of Public Works, Gary DiStefano; and Peter Vincini; from the fire department, Steve Mercieri and Todd Davis; from human resources, Diane Amaro; from the library, Barbara Fitzgerald, Lane Ziff, and Wendy Pearson; from parks and rec, Manaz Hamdi; from the police department, Eric Chapdeline, Chris Jerkowski, Mark Mandralla; the crossing guards, Edward Brown, John Russell, Erwin Say, Frederick Siniak, and Vicki Tobias; from the school department, Sandra Sweeney, Karen Black, Patricia Busilari, Karen Garska, Nancy O'Brien, Jennifer Quindale, Donald Boyo, Karen Williams, Richard Whitney, Michael Fromboise, Theresa Johnson, Pamela Peon, Linda Mendel, Maureen Miller, Elizabeth Scanlon, Jane Berman, Kristin Giugio, Phil DeGard Perry, Chelsea Cameron; from the board of health, Esther Munjin; from the town clerk's office, Beverly Gray, Inga Shuttlesworth, and John Russell; and from the boards and committees, from community preservation committee, Beth Green; from the finance committee, Mark Barowski and Richard Lias; from the park board, Dr. Richard Elfman; and from the school committee, Elizabeth Barron, Jessica Hutchins, Stephanie Jasmine, Karen Moore, and Melanie Rothstein. We thank all these individuals for their service.
Thank you. I'm Mark Gold, the chair of the select board, and it's my pleasure tonight to present the Citizen of the Year Award. Tonight, I'm presenting the Citizen of the Year Award to Vanessa O'Brien. So Vanessa, if you're here, please make your way up to the front of the room. And while she's doing that, I'd like to just read a little bit from the nomination that she received. Now, as many of you know, Vanessa's turned 100 years old earlier this year, a very vigorous 100, as you will see. In presenting this recognition to Vanessa, I'm going to read a little bit more from the nomination. Vanessa was born one month prior to Congress passing the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution that gave women the right to vote. Vanessa's led an extraordinary life for her time. She graduated from Bay Path Institute in 1938. Post-graduation, she worked for General Electric, where she moved up from secretary to becoming a first female outside sales engineer for the firm. It's her belief that all women, regardless of their beginnings, have the opportunity to leave a positive mark on the world with help from friends. Vanessa established the Vanessa O'Brien Scholarship at Bay Path almost 20 years ago to help young women achieve their dream of a college education. She has also supported the Bold Women Scholarship, which helps students stay in school and persist on to graduation. Over 20 years ago, Vanessa started working in the Maple Tree Gift and Thrift Shop at the Council on Aging. This shop supports programming for our seniors and residents who work at the center. In addition, she's volunteered in many capacities, serving the elders at the Council on Aging. She continues to work every day at the Maple Tree Gift Shop, conducting research on various donated items and working in the shop with customers to help them choose the right item. In 2012, that was at the age of 93, Vanessa traveled to China as part of Bay Path's Capitals of the World trip, and we're told climbed further on the Great Wall than any of her fellow travelers. In 2013, she received Standing on Her Shoulders Award from the Women's Fund of Western Massachusetts. With a sea captain father and a stay-at-home mother, Vanessa has achieved not only her personal dreams of success, but has emotionally and financially supported other women to achieve their own success in life. This Citizen of the Year Award recognizes not only Vanessa's contributions to our residents, but also her personal achievement and personal contribution to women's education during a time when it was far more difficult for women to advance their careers. She has transformed lives through her example and philanthropy to women everywhere. We also have a letter that was written to us by Dr. Carol O'Leary, who's the president of Bay Path University. It's rather lengthy, I'm going to give Vanessa the whole copy, but I just want to read one small part of it. It said, "What I remember most about our friendship," and this is Dr. O'Leary writing, "is that Vanessa is always so generous with her encouragement and support. She's been one of the most philanthropic alumni of any class year, and she continues to support her scholarship for students who would have never been able to attend Bay Path. Whenever we need her advice or input on a project, she's willing to provide her thoughts and opinion. Her generous spirit and kind heart have made her beloved by all who meet her." So please join me in recognizing Vanessa O'Brien with this award.
I just want to say thanks to you all, but I really don't do anything that the rest of you have narrowed again. Thank you very much.
It's a wonderful way to start. We'll now take up the motions on, starting with Article 1. Is there something else?
The bill.
You go ahead. Who's doing it?
Park Board, I think.
Park Board?
Still the motion.
Okay. So we will go to the motions. Article 1.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to choose three trustees to administer the William Goldwaite request, and that Don Barkman, Francis Mithit, and William McGirt be chosen as trustees.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Gold.
Yes. The Goldwaite request is an endowment fund left to the town of Long Meadow for assistance to the worthy poor of Long Meadow. The Board of Trustees administers this fund and makes expenditures from the accruing interest for applicants experiencing financial hardship. The trustees are chosen annually by the town meeting.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Article 2. Mr. Gold.
Yes. I move the town vote to transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $179,923 for the purpose of supplementing the fiscal year 2019 snow and ice removal deficit.
Is there a second? It's been made -- motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
Yes. The line item for snow and ice removal is the only line item that we can overspend, and every year, we end up making corrections or adjustments, I should say, based on what we actually spend at town meetings. So in fiscal year 2019, the snow and ice removal costs exceeded the $125,000 originally appropriated, and this transfer will fully fund the cost for the past winter.
Thank you. Finance committee recommendation? Who's the chair?
The Finance Committee votes to recommend.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion passes. Majority affirmative vote. Article 3. Mr. Gold.
I move the town vote to transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $55,000 to supplement the fiscal year 2019 DPW grounds forestry account for the purpose of continuing to remove or prune potentially hazardous trees on town property or rights of way.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Gold.
Yes. Removal exceeds budget predictions. Long Meadow has matured public trees which need maintenance. The Emerald Ash Borer, EAB, is an invasive insect, has been identified in Long Meadow. The EAB could kill all Long Meadow ash trees in the next six to 10 years. A cost-effective treatment is available that will save money compared with removals. $10,000 of this money is expected to be used for the purpose of protecting public shade trees from the Emerald Ash Borer.
Thank you. Finance committee recommendation? Mr. Santinello?
The Finance Committee votes to recommend.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion passes. Unanimous affirmative vote. Article 4. Mr. Gold.
Yes, Madam Moderator. I move the town vote to transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $10,000 to supplement the fiscal year 2019 fire vehicle maintenance account for the purpose of providing continued scheduled preventive maintenance on the fire apparatus.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
Yes. Currently, the account has less than $2,000 in it and just under $9,000 in preventive maintenance that's scheduled prior to June 30th, 2019, the end of our fiscal year. Historical trends of expenditure show that the account has been underfunded, and the fiscal year 2020 budget has been increased to reflect this year's and prior year's experience.
Finance committee recommendation? Mr. Santinello?
It's recommended by the Finance Committee.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion passes. Unanimous affirmative vote. Article 5. Mr. Gold.
I move the town vote to transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $135.61 for the purpose of paying bills of prior year.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
Yes. Two obligations of the town from prior fiscal years were discovered since the fall special town meeting in October. Passage of this article will allow payment of the prior year's bills.
Finance committee recommendation? Mr. Santinello?
It's recommended by the Finance Committee.
Any further discussion? This requires a four-fifths majority vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All opposed, raise your yellow cards. Motion passes. Unanimous affirmative vote. Article 6. Mr. Gold.
I move the town vote to transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $155,100 to the town's operations stabilization fund previously established by vote of Article 15 at the November 18, 2003 special town meeting.
Is there a second? You may speak to it, Mr. Gold.
Yes. Funds in the operations stabilization fund would secure the town's general reserve policy levels and help maintain the annual July 1st level of 5% to 10% of operating revenues the Select Board has established within its policy. It will also help to secure adequate levels of reserves, where Moody's Credit Rating Agency has stated the town reserve levels are quote "below the national and state average for the rating category" unquote of A2. The July 1st, 2018 level was 6.67%. The anticipated July 1st, 2019 level is 6.99%.
Finance committee?
It's recommended by the Finance Committee. Just a question.
Yes.
In the warrant, it has $135.
I'm sorry, could you just state your name?
Sorry, I'm sorry. Stephen Metz, 171 Coventry Lane. In the warrant, it says $135,000. Mr. Gold quoted $155. Which one is it, please?
It's the one that's -- the oral motion is the one that we vote on. And forgive me, I didn't make mention of that at the very beginning. We're voting on the motions that you hear, not necessarily the article. The motions are based on the article, but as long as the motion is very close to the article and doesn't exceed the scope, we can make a motion that is slightly different than the written article. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion passes. Majority -- unanimous affirmative vote. Article 7. Mr. Gold.
Yes, Madam Moderator. I move the town vote to fix the fiscal year 2020 salary and compensation of the moderator at $100, and the select persons at $2,000 each to provide for a reserve fund and to approve the fiscal year 2020 operating budget totaling $69,62,742. Itemized as follows: General Government, $1,620,161; Public Safety, $5,411,845; Planning and Community Development, $193,284; Schools, $35,153,129; Department of Public Works from the General Fund, $3,176,359; Community and Cultural Services, $1,800,114; Debt Services and Town School Employee Retiree Benefits, $14,983,051, for subtotal of the General Fund expenditures of $62,337,943; and for the Solid Waste and Recycling Enterprise Fund, $1,188,431; from the Water Enterprise Fund, $2,701,607; and the Sewer Enterprise Fund, $1,991,772; and the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, $842,989, for a total operating budget of $69,62,742. And to fund this General Fund, $62,337,943 be raised and appropriated as follows: $62, 337,943 from general taxation; and that to fund the Solid Waste Recycling Enterprise Fund, $1,188,431 be raised and appropriated as follows: $285,000 from solid waste recycling receipts, and $903,431 from general taxation; and to fund the Water Enterprise Fund, $2, 701,607 be raised and appropriated as follows: $2,701,607 from water receipts; and to fund the Sewer Enterprise Fund, $1,991,772 be raised and appropriated as follows: $1,991,772 from sewer receipts; and that to fund the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, $842,989 be raised and appropriated as follows: $292,000 from stormwater receipts, and $550,989 from general taxation.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Gold.
Yes. After I speak to it, I think there's going to be a presentation by our town manager. The annual -- this is the annual operating budget of the town, and it must be adopted and funds for the fiscal year that begins on July 1st, 2019. The budget was approved by the Select Board, reviewed by the Finance Committee, as required by town charter. The budget is printed as a balanced budget, as required by Mass. General Law and by the Charter.
Thank you. Finance committee recommendation?
It's recommended by the Finance Committee.
Mr. Crane?
We're just going to dim the front half of the light so we can see the screen a little better. Before I get started on the presentation, which is brief, there is a significant amount of information about the annual town budget in your warrant with detailed information about each category, so if you have a chance to check out the warrant for more information, I'm just going to kind of give a very brief overview of it. This isn't his fault, by the way. It's completely mine.
And Mr. Crane, while we're waiting for that, may I recognize the person at the yellow mic? I can't see your face. Mrs. Kalik?
Yes. Michael Kalik, 458 Williams Street. On this motion, I note that the moderator's salary has been voted -- or part of the motion of $100, yet I see on page 7 of the budget that the amount that's been allocated for the moderator is $200. So I wonder if it's $100 in Article 7 and what the difference is. We're giving the moderator a $100 raise on page 7, but not in this article.
Thank you. Mr. Crane?
We added an expense line item to the moderator's budget this year, really in large part because of some community forums that the moderator has initiated.
Oh.
And we've had quite a few special town meetings over the last year, so the hourly rate has really suffered for the moderator as a result.
Oh, I, okay. So this is that, in the budget article, it's not two hundred dollars?
It's a hundred for salary, a hundred for expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Crane.
I apologize for the delay. So, Town Manager Stephen Crane, it is my pleasure to present to you the fiscal year two thousand and twenty town budget. Once again, for the, well, I get, every time that we've done the budget, we've been able to provide to you a balanced budget to vote on without the use of reserves. One of the issues that we talked quite a bit about is our tax ceiling, which I'm not going to get into in great detail now, but there is a tax ceiling task force that has been meeting regularly. The Select Board's talked about it, there's been some media coverage. And if you want to know more about our tax ceiling, you can certainly talk to myself or the Finance Director, Paul Pesterzak. But a priority for the budget this year was to minimize to the greatest extent possible the increase in property taxes. Normally, the town has a historical trend of going up two and a half percent each year on property taxes, which is allowed under the state law known as Prop two and a half. And we've done that many years in a row. Last year, we went up two point three percent as a start towards reaching this goal of slowing the advance towards our tax ceiling. This year, we're pleased to say that we have, we're only increasing taxes by two percent out of the allowable two and a half percent. An overall general fund savings, about a quarter million dollars to the taxpayers. And we fully fund the school committee's requests. We fully fund the capital plan that was recommended by the town manager and then reviewed by capital planning and then subsequently approved by the Select Board on the warrant. We do increase the stormwater fee, MS four, which was not in full effect when we first adopted the stormwater fee, has now since gone into effect and has significantly increased the costs to manage stormwater. So that fee has gone up. And then we include the second annual mitigation payment from MGM Springfield that we received by virtue of our surrounding community agreement. Some more detail on that later in the presentation. We also have, right now, the budget that you're voting on has six point two percent increase in local aid based on the reports we're getting out of Beacon Hill on the budget process. That looks to be perhaps even higher than that. We are projecting a five percent increase in local aid. And this, the FY nineteen budget that you approved last May was the fourth consecutive year that the town won the Government Finance Officers Association Budgeting Best Practices Award. This budget that you see here upon approval will also be submitted to GFOA for similar recognition. So, here's our pie chart, we start off with every year. This is the operating budget by function. Overall, the budget, not including school's special revenue, is, as you can see, sixty-nine million dollars and change. The school department represents just over half of that budget. The next largest category would then be employee benefits, followed by the public works department, and then debt service, public safety, and on and on. As you can see, the categories, year in, year out, they stay largely fixed in these categories. And this is representative of many years of budgeting by town meeting. But I think what you see here in this pie chart represents a balanced approach to sustaining the high quality of services and municipal core services. So this is now spending categories. This does include the school's special revenue, which is why it goes from sixty-nine to seventy-one million. I say this every year, in fact, a friend of mine said to me a couple of weeks ago, "Well, you always tell us we're in the people business." And it warmed my heart because it means that occasionally somebody hears me. We are in the people business. So naturally, the greatest expense in our annual budget is people. And that is in the form of salaries and employee benefits. And then the next largest category, as you can see, is expenses. And expenses is a whole host of items, some of which are tied to employees, some of which are tied to other types of obligations. And then you have debt service as well. So just a quick snapshot of the departments. FY twenty, the budget you're voting on now versus the current budget FY nineteen, general government goes up just six tenths of a percent. Public safety goes up just over two and a half. Planning and Community Development actually goes down four tenths of a percent. That's largely due to attrition in an administrative position. Schools go up two point three six percent. Public Works is going up three point three eight, as you can see in the warrant. Some of that is forestry, high school maintenance and field maintenance, things that have been identified time and time again as priorities for the community. Community Services goes up four and a half percent. A lot of that is driven by the stores' library budget, which I'll touch on in a minute. Debt Service goes down six point six and a half percent. I should note that in the FY twenty budget, the debt service that has been approved for the adult center isn't being carried yet. That will be borrowed sometime in FY twenty-twenty. So that number will probably increase next year. And then employee benefits and liability, just about seven and a half percent. That's quite frankly, pretty standard and largely driven by health insurance. So Stores Library, as you can see in the last bullet, there's a thing called the Municipal Appropriation Requirement, the MAR. And the MAR is a requirement by the state that they ask municipalities to meet a certain level of contribution for their local libraries. And if you meet that contribution, you are a part of the state library system, which in our neck of the woods is the CW Mar system, which gives us access to interlibrary loans and digital content and things like that. And it really is a tremendous benefit to the library. If a community is unable to meet that requirement, you can request a waiver. A few years back, there were, I think, well over a hundred communities that were receiving waivers from the MAR requirement. And this year, I think we are one of only fifteen. So we recognized that the library was an area that we probably needed to pay some attention to. We were fortunate in that because of our retirement, someone who was working twenty-six hours a week but was receiving benefits was leaving, and we were able to build that position up to a thirty-six and a half hour a week position without incurring the expense of the benefits package because it was already attributable to that position. That enabled us to expand the hours of the library, which is a great thing, and increase our contribution. We also increased our books and periodicals contributions as well as our technology contributions. The Mass Board of Library Commissioners, the governing agency that reviews and approves waiver requests for the MAR, has certain benchmarks you need to hit for those categories. So we have improved our effort there. For years, the cost of maintaining the Stores Library building, which is owned by the town, has been carried in the DPW budget. And we decided this year to really put that in the library's budget to accurately reflect how much the taxpayers of the town contribute to the operations of the Stores Library. And even with doing all of this, we still require a waiver for the MAR. We're closer than we were before, but we still need the waiver. But the increases presented here really present a tremendous value. We're getting a lot of bang for our buck out of this, especially because of the ability to expand the hours. And I'd be remiss if I didn't note that the operations of the Stores Library would not be complete without the help of the Friends Group as well as the generous contributions and support of the Board of Trustees. So this is the second year of the MGM annual payments. For those who don't recall, in two thousand and fourteen, the town went to an arbitration process with MGM because we were designated by the Gaming Commission, the Massachusetts Gaming Commission, as a surrounding community under the Massachusetts Gaming Act. We prevailed in that arbitration. Cumulatively, the value of the award is five million, and that is broken up into eight hundred fifty thousand upfront. Those funds are specified to be used for, to go towards the design and construction or reconstruction of three primary intersections that were identified in the arbitration process as going to be impacted by the casino. And that is Forest Glen and Route five, Route five and Converse, and then Converse and Laurel Street. That design is under, is about twenty-five percent complete. And that project is scheduled to be funded by the state, potentially in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, hopefully sooner than that. The other part of that award was annual payments starting off at two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year for unspecified significant adverse impacts, but generally in the categories of infrastructure and public safety. Those payments have a built-in two and a half percent inflationary factor. So the first year we received it was last year. We applied that to debt service for Engine Two that was approved by town meeting, I think, a year ago, a year or so ago. Engine Two is the primary response vehicle to Interstate ninety-one, where increased traffic accidents are one of the impacts that have been predicted as a result of the operations of the casino. The second year, we received over two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. We're going to apply a little bit of that to the debt service. We're going to have some funds available to do some, to have some crime analysis done by our police departments, specifically regarding the casino. And we are also going to use that to sustain our pavement preservation program. When we went through the arbitration process, increased traffic was really the thing that was the primary argument that the town made, that the arbitration panel felt compelling, found compelling. So these are the areas that we have focused on. As you know, the casino hasn't been in operation quite a year yet. And so we are actively monitoring, you know, potential impacts, incidents that may occur, investigating whether they were originating from the casino. So I'll be candid, we haven't seen anything major from, as a result of the operation of the casino yet. But we are going to continue to monitor. And these funds only happen for fifteen years. So we view them as annually recurring, one-time money. And so right now, the approach we're taking is kind of a wait and see year over year to see what the needs are as a result, like I said, of the operations of the casino. Just a quick review of available fund balances. Free cash is about five hundred thousand. Operational stabilization funds, three point eight million. Capital stabilization, one hundred and forty-five thousand. Water retained earnings, five hundred and eighteen thousand. Sewer retained earnings, eight hundred and ninety thousand. Solid waste recycling retained earnings, twenty-two. Ambulance reserve, one hundred and thirty-two thousand. I know it's kind of brief, but any questions? I just have one more slide. As some of you may know, this is my last town meeting with you as your town manager. And I would just like to say thank you for two things. The first is thank you for welcoming me and my family to Long Meadow Community. We've had a great six years here. And also thank you for being an engaged and informed legislative body that has served your community very well.
Floor is open, yes.
Thank you. Stephen Metz, one seventy-one Coventry Lane. Ms. Moderator, I move to amend Article seven by adding sixteen thousand dollars to the public safety budget.
Sixteen thousand dollars?
Sixteen thousand.
All right. Is that in writing?
I've given it to the town secretary.
The number is different than what you had given me?
Yes, I wanted to round it off.
Sixteen thousand. Thank you, the motion has been made. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded, you may speak to it.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. The budget is currently proposed in Article seven. Here marks two thousand dollars for projected wage increases for police and fire officers. However, very recently, senior officers in those departments received a well-deserved raise amounting to sixteen thousand dollars, plus a little bit. This was not accounted for in the proposed public safety budget. This omission will necessarily be made up by a corresponding decrease in something else in the public safety request. I understand that that something else will likely be overtime pay. As it is, the police department is understaffed. The personnel gap is currently being filled by overtime assignments. Not to fund the salary increase, therefore, will have a deleterious effect on the number of public safety officers protecting us at any time and potentially public safety itself. I think it would be a fall in not to restore these funds to the public safety budget line, not to mention the fact it sets a bad precedent for establishing budgets. Therefore, I recommend that town meeting accept this amendment to restore sixteen thousand dollars to the budget to fund the salary increases properly. Thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion on the motion to amend? Okay, so the way this will work is we'll vote on the motion to amend first, and then we will discuss and then vote on the motion, whether as amended or not. So this is for the motion to amend by adding sixteen thousand dollars to the public safety line item. All those in favor of the motion to amend, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed to the motion to amend, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you, the motion passes by majority affirmative vote. So now we come to a discussion of the motion on the budget as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote on the amended budget. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you, the motion passes by unanimous affirmative vote. Article eight, Mr. Gold.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for the purpose of establishing a salary settlement account to cover fiscal year twenty collective bargaining agreements and other wage settlements.
Is there a second? You may speak to it, Mr. Gold.
Yes, all the non-school collective bargaining agreements expired this June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, with the exception of the firefighters' union agreement, which runs through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. The other collective bargaining units are the clerical, DPW, the police patrol officers, police supervisors, and the dispatchers. And they are not yet settled. This article will provide funds for the approved collective bargaining agreements for those union contracts and any other wage settlements when they are reached. Funds from the salary settlement account can be released to the individual budgetary line items by the Finance Director only after receipt of the finalized collective bargaining agreement and wage settlement accounts. This appropriation will cover wages for fiscal year two thousand and twenty only once agreements are finalized.
Mr. Finance Committee, Mr. Santinello.
This article is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Thank you, any further discussion? We'll come directly to a vote, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you, all those opposed, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you, this motion passes by unanimous affirmative vote. Article nine, Mr. Gold.
Yes, Madam Moderator, I move to divide Article nine to separate out those appropriations that require only a majority vote from the appropriation that requires a two-thirds vote because it's from stabilization fund.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, so the motion is to divide the question. And I don't know that we've dealt with this before, but just to explain what this does.
Sure, what I'm going to do.
I'll explain. So what the motion will do is to separate out the article into two different votes. So we'll take two votes on this article. The first will be for, it will require a simple majority. And the second vote, because it requires transfer from stabilization, will require a two-thirds vote. Is that clear? Okay, thank you. So the motion to divide the question is debatable, if anybody wants to debate that. Otherwise, we'll come directly to a vote. The motion to divide, this is not voting on the content of the article. This is whether to divide the question, and that requires a simple majority. All those in favor of dividing the question, raise your yellow cards. Thank you, all those opposed. The motion passes by majority affirmative vote. We will now have a motion on one of those, a new motion on the first part of it, please, Mr. Gold.
Yes, in Article nine A, I'll call it. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the following amounts for capital projects, and that any remaining amounts from the capital projects be returned to the capital stabilization fund where applicable. From raise and appropriate fiscal year two thousand and twenty, there are thirteen projects, as read in the warrant, totaling one million, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand. warrant totaling $1,698,474, and from the multi-fund, there's DPW Class VI Dump Truck and DPW Backhoe Loader Replacement. I waive the reading of the amounts for those, uh, for those expenditures and appropriations.
Can you do that? Mr. Gold, could you read the numbers on those, please?
Glad to. Uh, from raise and appropriate fiscal year 2020, capital development, $25,000. Capital reserve, $10,000. Fire truck reserve, $60,000. Fire refurbish marine one, $32,000. School-town network improvements, $300,000. High school HVAC upgrades, $26,000. Blueberry Hill School boiler replacement, phase II, $125,200. Center School Fire Alarm System, $250,000. Greenwood Center gutters and snow guards, $52,820. DPW ground sidewalk plow utility machine, $55,000. Guard rail replacement, $25,000. Sidewalk preservation, $400,000. Pavement preservation, $337,454, for total of $1,698,474. And for multi-funds, the DPW Class VI Dump Truck, $42,500 from water retained earnings, $42,500 from sewer retained earnings, $85,000 from raise and appropriate in fiscal year 2020. And for the DPW backhoe loader replacement, $22,525 from sewer water, sewer retained earnings, $22,525, and from raise and appropriate in fiscal year 2020, $45,050.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, you may speak to the motion.
Annually, the town appropriates funds for capital expenditures. The fiscal year 2020 general fund allocation for capital increased slightly from 3% to 3.03% of net general fund operating revenues. Supplemental funds from the capital stabilization fund, which will be part of, uh, Article IX-B, which I will read later, uh, which, when combined with the general fund allocation, pushed, pushed the fiscal year 2020 capital appropriations to more than $2 million, thereby exceeding the fiscal year 2020 original goal of capital expenditures of 1.98 million.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval of the article.
Any further discussion on the motion under the article? Okay, so we will come directly to a vote on the motion, this is a simple, uh, majority that's required for this part. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you, all those opposed, raise your yellow cards. Thank you, the motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Hold on one moment, Mr. Gold. Yes, Mr. Gold.
Article IX-B, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, in this case, the following amount for capital projects, that any remaining amounts from the capital projects be returned to the capital stabilization fund where applicable, and from the capital stabilization fund for pavement preservation, the amount of $87,546.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, you may speak to it, Mr. Gold.
This is the second part of our capital expend, expenditures. This is coming from the capital stabilization fund, but it supplements both the previous money that was appropriated, the $337,000 for pavement preservation, in addition to something that we'll see later in the, in the warrant, which is state chapter 90 funds for doing, uh, pavement preservation and repaving in the town.
Finance Committee recommendation?
The finance committee votes to recommend.
Any further discussion on this transfer from stabilization fund? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote, this requires a two-thirds majority for approval. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you, all those opposed, raise your yellow cards. The motion passes by unanimous affirmative vote. Article X, Ms. Angelides.
I move the town vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $100,000 for the purpose of producing preliminary survey work for the possible reconstruction, reconfiguration of the southern end of Long Meadow Street Route 5.
Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded, you may speak to it, Ms. Angelides.
In order to be considered for state funding for the reconstruction, reconfiguration of the southern end of Long Meadow Street Route 5, the town must prepare preliminary survey work. This appropriation will allow the town to satisfy that requirement.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Article X is not recommended by the finance committee.
Mr. Foster?
Yes, thank you. Richard Foster, 29 Captain Road, also a select board member. Uh, on Article X, I'd like to explain, folks, this is, this is a transportation program that's in the state, it's called TIP, Traffic Station Improvement Program. This is major dollars that come to our community as long as we do the preliminary engineering on projects. Uh, these funds are only available for very select roads, the ones that have regional importance such as Converse, Long Meadow Street. Uh, Converse, by the way, was a TIP project. Long Meadow Street is coming up in 2024, from Converse Street to the, uh, to the Springfield Line to do all of those improvements, that's also under the TIP program. This is a $9 million, approximately $9 million program for our, for our town if it's funded and put in. We compete every spring, our engineering department does, against all the other communities for these funds. Right now, this project is rated at 40, which is one of the highest scores of any project that has been unassigned. It has been accepted, but it's been unassigned. What we're asking for in this element is to do the preliminary engineering to start the process, there'll also be two more pieces after that, but this is the first piece. This also helps our engineering, I think we just went down, also helps our engineering department in defending the projects against the other projects in our community. My feelings are, if we don't vote in favor of this project, we're fairly clearly demonstrating that we're not supporting our DPW engineering department or the advancement of road systems within, within our town. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Edward Clark, 157 Pleasant View. Uh, I wanted to, uh, speak in favor of the motion and say that, at the time of the finance committee's vote to not recommend, I don't feel we were fully informed. Uh, Mr. Foster came subsequently and gave us more information. The town engineer has subsequently given us more information. I personally feel I would have voted differently if I had had that information, and I just wanted to make that clear to everyone.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote, this requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you, would all those opposed, raise your yellow cards? Thank you, the motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article XI, Ms. Angelides.
I move the town vote to transfer $313,000 from the sewer retained earnings account and vote to authorize the treasurer to borrow the sum of $800,000 for the purpose of phase I of replacing the North Interceptor Sewer and the related bond costs to be paid for in the first instance from sewer receipts.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded, you may speak to it?
This article authorizes debt to finance phase I of replacing the North Interceptor Sewer. The North Interceptor conveys sewage from the area west of Long Meadow Street from the Springfield Line south to Emerson Road. The interceptor was constructed in the 1920s and is in poor condition. The new design moves the sewer line off the piers of the, uh, embankment, embankment of budding Interstate 91 and onto the ground. By doing this, the line will be protected and more accessible for maintenance. Future phases include slip lining, pipes, land clearing to gain access to the infrastructure, and siphon evaluation and repairs.
Any, Mr. Santinello?
It's recommended by the finance committee.
Any further discussion? We'll come directly to a vote, this requires a two-thirds vote for borrowing. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you, all those opposed, raise your yellow cards? Thank you, the motion passes by two-thirds declaration, majority affirmative vote. Um, yes, at the yellow mic, Ms. Summer?
Madam Moderator, Cynthia Summer, 57 Farmington Avenue. Madam Moderator, I move to advance Article 42 after we finish Article 31.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, you may speak to it?
I just feel there's a lot of people here who have babysitters, or, uh, if we go late in this meeting, um, might need to leave, and so I'd like to get the, the sense of most of the people of the town on that article.
Thank you, any further discussion on the motion to advance Article 42 until after we finish Article 31? This requires a two-thirds majority to advance an article. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you, would all those opposed, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you, the motion passes by declaration two-thirds majority, affirmative vote. One moment, Ms. Angelides. Article 12.
I move the town vote to authorize the treasurer to borrow the sum of $425,000 for the purpose of improving drainage on Willow Brook Road and related bonding costs to be paid for in the first instance from stormwater fees.
Is there a second? The motion's been made and seconded, you may speak to it.
This article authorizes debt to finance drainage improvements on Willow Brook Road. The storm drainage system on Willow Brook Road is more than 50 years old and is failing. The existing drain line has voids that cause sinkholes, potholes, and degraded pavement. The proposed work would include slip lining of existing concrete drain pipe and repaving the road.
Any further discussion on the motion? Finance Committee recommendation?
It's recommended by the finance committee.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote, this requires a two-thirds majority vote in the case of borrowing. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you, all those opposed, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you, the motion passes by declaration two-thirds majority affirmative vote. Article 13.
I move the town vote to authorize the treasurer to borrow the sum of $200,000 for the purpose of improving drainage on Magnolia Circle and related bonding costs to be paid in the first instance from stormwater fees.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded, you may speak to it?
This article authorizes debt to finance drainage improvements on Magnolia Circle. The existing storm drainage system on Magnolia Circle is more than 50 years old and is failing. The existing outfall is dismantling and causing up gradient slope to fail and recede back into the abutters property. The existing catch basins are deteriorated and not sufficiently sized to provide adequate inlet capacities causing the street to flood. The plan is to replace the deteriorated infrastructure with adequately sized catch basins, culvert, and a drainage fallout.
Finance Committee?
It's recommended by the finance committee.
Yes, sir, the yellow mic, name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Larry Goldberg, I live at 159 Redfern. Um, I ask that Article 41 come before Article 42, because I feel if the people from 42 that are wanting to leave, leave, we may not have enough of a town representation for Article 41.
Could we make that motion after we dispose of this article? Would you be minimal to that?
Sure.
And that way we can finish this business first? Thank you. Stay close, though. Anything, any, are you speaking? Yes, sir.
Evening, John Schoonmaker, 84 Magnolia Circle, Long Meadow. I'm speaking in favor of this Article 13, and would first like to thank, uh, Mary O'Marza, the superintendent of the DPW, and, uh, many of my neighbors who worked with me to, uh, pull this article together. Uh, I can attest to, uh, the street flooding, the, uh, old culverts, and particularly, uh, an eroding, uh, drainage outfall that's a particularly dangerous, uh, condition with a potentially seven-foot fall into, uh, the spillway and drainage area. So, again, my thanks to, uh, the DPW team that helped with this and my neighbors.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion on the motion under Article 13? We'll come directly to a vote, this requires a two-thirds majority, please, all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you, all those opposed, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you, the motion passes, unanimous affirmative vote. I'll recognize you, sir. Yes, name again, please?
Larry Goldberg, 159 Redfern.
And your motion was to move, which article?
Article 41, which would be before 42, but we'd please have it before 42 is called ahead, so that everybody's here to vote with it.
Okay, so, so, um, after, after Article 31, deal with 41?
So basically, move 41 and 42 up, because I agree with also moving up 42.
Okay, so the motion is to move Article 41 to after we deal with Article 31?
But before 42.
But before 42, yes. There, the motion has been made and seconded, you may speak to it? Do you want to just say a reason why?
I'm just concerned that, with a lot of people being here for 42 like myself, that the room may clear out if we wait to do 41 at a later time.
Okay, so again, this requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you, all those opposed, please raise your yellow cards? I'm in doubt. We're gonna count this one. Could I have the counters, please, go to your stations, everyone, please take a seat? Alright, so the procedures for the counting, well, each of you are in a section. You have two tellers, one with a clipboard, one with a clicker. They will direct you to raise your yellow cards row by row. Please follow their directions, and they will report the counts for all of the yes votes first, and then we will count the no votes. Counters, you may proceed. The, the counters are directing you to vote, yes? As I said, we are just counting the yes votes now. So if you have not been counted, please try to, try to avoid standing up and milling around, we want to keep this straight. around. We want to keep this straight. And as a reminder, if you leave, you may not come back in. So if you want to be able to come back in, you'll have to wait until after the vote is over. And kindly avoid mil, avoid milling around. If you want your vote to be counted, you must be seated. And tellers, once you have finished your count, you may line up at the mic, but I'm going to get everybody's count together. No, no, we're only counting the yes, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, may I have your attention? We are only counting the yes votes now. We'll have a total of all of the yes votes, and then we will count the no votes. If you're ready to, to share the subtotals, then I'll accept them. State your name and the section that you're counting.
House floor rear right, five zero fifty for the yes.
House front floor right, thirteen.
Right front bleachers, eight.
Rear left bleacher forty, four zero.
Front left bleacher thirteen.
Rear floor left, thirty-two.
House front floor left, five.
Right rear bleacher thirty-five.
Thank you. You may now count the no votes. Are all the counters finished? Okay?
Right front bleachers, four.
House front floor left, four.
Rear floor left, forty-five.
Right rear bleacher, eight.
House floor rear right, thirty-four. Rear left bleacher, three.
Front left bleacher, thirteen.
House front floor right, twelve.
The total is 196 in favor, 123 opposed. The motion fails to reach the two-thirds majority vote. We shall now go to Article 14.
I move the town vote to authorize the treasurer to borrow the sum of $800,000 for the purpose of permanently capping the former municipal solid waste landfill located on Bernie Road, Tina Lane, and related bonding costs.
Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
This article authorizes debt to finance permanent capping of the former municipal solid waste landfill on Bernie Road, Tina Lane. The town has been working with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection to permanently cap the landfill which operated from 1958 to 1979 for over 10 years. The DEP allowed the town to use the landfill for the disposal of contaminated soils from the new DPW site, which saved the town $2 million for out-of-state disposal costs without further degrading the existing environmental conditions. The town must now meet certain DEP deadlines to complete the permanent cap that will encapsulate the recently placed soils as well as the pre-existing solid waste. Approval of the article will allow the town to mitigate a longstanding environmental liability and prepare the site for potential future use as a solar farm.
Finance committee recommendation?
Is recommended by the finance committee?
Any further discussion on Article 14? Seeing none, we'll, oh. Getting up to speak or no? Okay, then we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. Would all those in favor please raise your yellow cards? Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion passes by two-thirds declaration affirmative vote. Article 15.
I move the town vote to authorize the treasurer to borrow the sum of $870,000 for the purpose of purchasing town street lights and the replacement of the lights with high-efficiency LED lighting and related bonding costs.
Is there a second? You may speak to it, Ms. Angelides.
This article authorizes debt to finance the purchase of streetlights and poles as well as the conversion of the existing light fixtures to high-efficient LED lighting. The town is using a grant from the State Green Communities Program to retain a consultant to audit the existing streetlights and poles, as well as to design a lighting system that will maximize, maximize efficiency while providing light levels and enhance safety. The town has also engaged the towns of West Springfield, Agawam, and City of Springfield to negotiate as a group for the purchase of streetlights from EverSource as well as the eventual procurement of the LED fixtures and associated maintenance. The town currently pays EverSource $268,641 per year to lease 104, 1,498 streetlights. An expense that will be eliminated and replaced by the annual cost of this bond estimated $90,000 per year for 10 years, and an ongoing maintenance cost estimated to be $43,500 per year, for savings to the town of $130,000 per year for the first 10 years and $220,000 per year thereafter. The town will also receive rebids from EverSource as well as incentives from the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources that could reduce the overall cost by almost $100,000. This proposal for bonding a capital purchase to reduce ongoing costs was previously successfully used by the town to purchase our fiber optic system.
Finance committee recommendation?
Is recommended by the finance committee?
Yes, sir. Name and address?
Christopher Trotta, 37 Homecrest Street. A couple of questions, if I may. The first is, does the, does town manager have any, or anyone have any information as to how many streetlights were replaced due to auto accidents, weather, or other factors? And also, could you please explain the necess, necessity of a $44,000, $45,000 maintenance contract when an LED fixture has an average lifespan of 100,000 hours and a seven-year warranty?
Thank you. Mr. Crane?
There are about 250 complaints about streetlight issues, outages for various reasons. I don't have specific on car knocks down, car knockdowns, but we did have just the audit of our streetlight inventory and other public space lights has just been completed. We're in the process of going through all that. In terms of the maintenance contract, these est, you know, obviously, we're not the first, we're not the first town to get at this. This has been something that's been happening quite a bit in the Commonwealth, and the Metropolitan Planning Commission, which is basically the regional planning agency for the city of Boston, is kind of the statewide leader on helping municipalities do this process, and they have estimators that you can use to figure out what's the cost to convert, how much should a fixture cost you, how much you'd be carrying for annual maintenance based on the number of fixtures you have. We've been working with the towns of Agawam and West Springfield. They're in just about the same phase of the process as we are, and our hope is to collectively procure a maintenance contract with all three towns to kind of drive that cost down and get, you know, a bulk buying, if you will. Does that help?
If I may, a follow-up then?
Yes, one follow.
The, the maintenance contract then would to maintain the lights themselves or the poles?
Mr. Crane?
Both. And lights, you know, you may get a bad fixture. One could get knocked down. I mean, stuff happens. Same thing with poles. So like I said, we're, we're going on the, I mean, there's a lot of data out there that shows how much maintenance of these systems costs, so we're using that to estimate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roger Wojcik, 29 Burns Meadow. Having difficulty appreciating the material in here. The assumption apparently is made that certain costs are going to be associated with the new system, which is not defined, and the costs are $870,000. I'm assuming that the new system is going to include about 1,500 streetlights replaced, yet there was considerable work done about 10 years ago by a professional lighting consultant who was brought in here and seriously challenged the number of streetlights we had in town, saying simply that with today's lighting systems in each automobile, there's no significant reason why lamps should be in place except at the intersections. And we've got streetlights up and down the, well, you can see it, 1,500 of them. The suggestion is made here is that the town is going to be using a, a grant to retain a consultant, which suggests to me that the consultant hasn't started, yet somehow magically, we have come to an $870,000 number that assumes the completion of his work, the effective negotiations with EverSource, et cetera, et cetera. Help me understand why we should be approving today $870,000 for a project that we know nothing about.
Mr. Crane?
I wouldn't say we know nothing about it. We, the select board and I have been working on this for a number of years. The 875 is two parts. It's the, the purchase price from EverSource, which is pretty much fixed, and they are, they, under the law, if they, they must sell us the lights if we want to buy them, but they get to set the price. We hope to work with Westside and Agawam because they are also EverSource customers to try and negotiate a better price, but we've been, one of the reasons why we didn't do this five years ago is because EverSource has been somewhat immovable on their price. And then the other aspect of it is the per fixture price, again, which is, which is an estimate. The consultant is, we phased the contract. Real, Real Term Energy is named a consultant. They do these systems all over.
Is the consultant on?
Mr., um, sorry, Mr. Crane?
I'm sorry. Is the consultant on the job now?
Yeah.
Mr. Crane?
As I was saying, it's a phased contract, so the, the audit is done now. They, they are challenging the number of lights we have. I, I don't know that I agree with the proposition that streetlights only need to be at intersections because, as you know, streetlights help deter crime, and as you know, as you know, where we have a lot of car breaks and, and a lot of property crime, and, and streetlights can help mitigate that a little bit. And so we actually know quite a bit about our streetlight system. The next phase of the project with this consultant is a design of our system, which includes an analysis of where do we replace streetlights? If we take out the old sodium vapor metal, metal halide fixtures and put in a much brighter LED, do we need to go kind of one-for-one on every pole, or can we do fewer, you know, be more strategic with locations? That's a part of the next phase.
As I understand it, you just said the next part of the, of the plan is the design of the system, yet you've already made the assumption that you know what that design is sufficient to come up with a $870,000 number. Something doesn't fit. This is like saying, I'm going to go ahead and design a house, and it's going to cost me $432,000. Hallelujah. There's no information on what you're working. This particular article, I'm assuming, is premature.
The next speaker, Mr. Gold?
Yeah, I'd like to speak in favor of this article for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is the economics of the project. You know, as it states here, we currently pay EverSource per year as a lease $268,600 just to rent the, the streetlights. If we do nothing more than approve this, this article, what we will do is buy them as it is for their price, which is about 700 and some odd thousand dollars. We can't do anything about that price. We've been negotiating for 10 years, and that's what the DPUC, the Public Utilities Commission, has said is the book value price. But even when we buy it at their price and bond this, and then when we take over the ownership, we, we, we get a service contract so that we don't have to take care of them in case a car hits a pole or a snow takes down a light or something like that, we're going to be saving $130,000 a year for the first 10 years, and then $220,000 a year after that. That's with the lights we have. Once we then get into the final design of replacing those lights, whether it's one-for-one, as Mr. Crane said, or something different, as he indicated it may be, where three lights get replaced with two, or six lights replaced with five. Once that design is completed, and then they get replaced with LEDs, the majority of that cost will come out of the balance of what we're approving tonight, plus green energy funds, plus funds, incentives from the utilities themselves that will pay for implementing that project. We'll start saving even more money because we'll be replacing the energy gobbling lights we have now with high-efficiency lights. So I, I urge people to vote for this, to start saving the town $130,000 next year, and more money beyond that when this bond goes through, and even more money when we get the, the lights replaced with high-efficiency LEDs. I've got a copy of that audit that if anybody wants to take a look at it, and there are others available.
Think how much money we would save if we bought half of those lights right now. Thank you.
Ready to come to a vote? This requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion passes by two-thirds. Article 16. Ms. Angelides.
I move the town vote to authorize the treasurer to borrow the sum of $1,541,000 for the purpose of making improvements to the Wolf Swamp Fields and parking areas, and that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer's authorized to borrow said sum money and provided further that any appropriation here thereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on the said borrowing from the limitation on taxes imposed by MGL Chapter 59, Section 21(c), otherwise known as Proposition 2 1/2.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Ms. Angelides.
This article would fully fund the Wolf Swamp Field master plan, which includes renovating all the fields by providing irrigation, resurfacing the fields, and reconfiguring them. The master plan will also improve vehicle and pedestrian safety by separating the existing parking along Wolf Swamp Road from the street and creating a new centralized parking area. Wolf Swamp Fields are by far the most utilized athletic field facilities in Long Meadow. They are the primary location for a Long Meadow youth soccer, Long Meadow youth field hockey, Long Meadow boys youth lacrosse, and Long Meadow girls youth lacrosse. They are also used by the Long Meadow baseball, Little League, and high school, ultimate frisbee, as well as countless practices, games, and jamborees.
Finance committee recommendation?
This article is not recommended by the finance committee.
Any reason? No? Okay. I understand there's a presentation. Mr. Crane?
So, I just have a brief presentation about the Wolf Swamp Fields renovation project. Interestingly, a few years ago, the first time we requested funding for Wolf Swamp Fields, I actually had a presentation showing kind of our master plan. And for those of you who are here, I said, "I've got a presentation, but if you just want to vote on it, I can skip the presentation." And the overwhelming feeling from those in attendance at the time was, "Skip the presentation, let's just go vote." So, as the project advanced, the people are like, "We haven't seen a plan." I was like, "Oh, jeez." I wish I had given that presentation at town meeting. So, now you're stuck. Now, we're definitely going to give it. So, this, I just want to give a brief summary of the Wolf Swamp Fields renovation and master plan. So, I've heard the, the statement made that, you know, recreational fields aren't really a need. I disagree with that. I think the, a, a healthy recre, a, a set of amenities for recreation and open space benefit every single household in this community. It is a part of the quality of life matrix that is so important to Long Meadow that in fact sustains all of our house values. And if you're going to have recreational amenities like Wolf Swamp Fields, then there are times where you need to do this project, and this project is needed for reasons that I, I will describe. The first is that it is by far the most heavily used amenity, recreational asset we have over 2,000 participants a year. You can see the, the many sports that use it here. That doesn't include people from non-organized sports that also use the fields, but it, it runs the gamut of many age groups, many different types of sports. There are safety issues there predominantly. If you've ever driven by there when there's a large event, then I don't really, I don't really need to describe it in great detail. The parking is chaotic. The traffic going through there gets really tightened down, and it makes it really kind of precarious for pedestrians. The other thing is, even though they're clearly marked, you know, no parking signs everywhere, sometimes, I'm sure it's only people from out of town, but sometimes there's not really a strict adherence to boundaries of other people's property when it comes to parking, and that's a big problem for the neighbors around Wolf Swamp Field. And then, of course, the, the field conditions. So, a few years, in 2015, Barry Jarvis led the effort to do a, a community survey that really gave us a lot of input about Wolf Swamp Fields and helped us set our goals for the master plan. I won't read them off to you, but obviously, number one is parking for users, spectators, and abutters. Number two is that the fields are adequate for the needs of the community and well-cared for. Three is that they are, that they meet the standards for athletic events and requirements, and that they reflect the standards of the community, and they demonstrate our commitment to youth sports. Four, that volunteers are actively engaged in the maintenance of them. And five, that there's a long-term commitment to preservation, to maintenance of Wolf Swamp Fields. So, current conditions, you know, picture tells a thousand words. I don't have to say too much here, obviously, but it's an issue. The, the fields are heavily used, and so, because we, we don't have an irrigation system, which means we can't do the seeding and fertilization and weed control that we would like to do, they don't get the chance to recover, and I think, and there's been a deterioration over time. And that deterioration, quite frankly, has led to a reduction in bookings by larger events, which is, both diminishes the town's reputation in the region in terms of our commitment to youth sports, and also reduces potential revenue. I hear all the time, you know, other towns have better fields. You can see here, whether it's Wilberham, Westfield, Northampton, Agawam, playing conditions are much better, and we, we believe that Wolf Swamp Fields should be the best it can be. So, the project scope, we are proposing a single-phase project. When we got this started, a few years ago, we were talking about a phased project. We hired a civil engineer who specializes in athletic facilities, and the further along we got into it, the more we realized that a phased approach was going to be, really take far longer, overall require more displacement and inconvenience for teams, families, associations, and you probably weren't going to get, you weren't going to get as good a work product because you'd be trying to match newly planted grass last year with tearing up old fields, and it was just, doing it all at once was determined to be the most efficient way to go. You can see the 1.541 million that we're looking for. A lot of it has to do with fixing the parking area along Wolf Swamp Road and then creating a central parking area with pavement and drainage that will make it easy for folks to access all of the fields from their vehicle. That's a significant amount of it. And then there's an irrigation system that will go throughout the fields, and then, of course, the reconstruction of, of the turf. So, regrading, reseeding, and then finally converting what is the gravel parking area to the east end of the site into an additional playing field. Sorry, go back, Kevin. So, according to the estimate from our engineer, this is the $1.5 million option. If we did this over phases with cost escalators and, and other considerations, it would be over $2 million to do it as a phased approach. So, this is the fall layout. I, I don't know how easy you can see this, but it, I have it, the diagram of the, of the fall field layout as an overlay over the existing conditions. And if you can see it, you can see that there's now a field where there's parking, and you can see the central parking area kind of in the middle there. If you go to the next slide, this is the, this is now the spring layout, and it's, it's a rendering from the designer, which is a little clearer. So, you can see where the parking is right in front of the concession stand. Again, much more accessible, much more intuitive layout, much safer. And then there'll be a, a physical barrier of curb, guardrail, that's, that'll be planted between Wolf Swamp Road and the current parking area, and we think that'll be a tremendous safety enhancement. And then, like I said, you can see the field layout for the springtime. So, town meeting has approved funding for this in pieces in the past. In 2017, through the CPA, we received $80,000 to install a well that would then feed the irrigation system. That work is complete, and that, those funds have been expended. In 2018, a citizen's petition requested $150,000 for a field reconstruction. We've spent about $20,000 of that money on the design that you, you just saw. Then, there was also a town request of $100,000 to do the parking area improvements along Wolf Swamp Road. We spent about $7,500 on survey and design for that as well. So, the total we've been appropriated over the years is $330,000. $107,500 has been expended, which leaves $222,500 in already appropriated, approved funds for the project. Later on this evening during CPA funds, there's another request for $100,000 that the, that the community preservation committee supported, which, for lack of a better term, is a hedge so the project can continue to move forward if voters don't approve the 1.5 million tonight, and if it's approved tonight, then at the, at the, at that exclusion vote at the ballot box. So, the $100,000 is an insurance policy. If that, if this passes and that passes, there will be $322,500 that will offset directly the total amount of borrowing. So, we have our estimate at 1.5 million. The true cost of the project, like all things we do in town government, won't be known until you actually open the bids. On that day, we will know the true, true cost of the project and the total amount we need to borrow, which will be reduced by the 322. So, I just want to talk a little about the timeline. I, I don't have the timeline for phased approach, but seeing the reality of even doing it all at once and the displacement that that causes, like I said, it would be exponentially worse as a phased approach. But if everything is approved, and we would bid this out in the fall, and in the spring of 2020, the work would start, and there would be the displacement of the eight-week spring programs, which includes girls lacrosse, boys lacrosse, soccer teams, ultimate frisbee, and baseball, and that's hundreds and hundreds of participants. And then, construction would go through the fall. You have your 10-week fall programs that include field hockey, soccer teams, and then two special events. Then, construction would continue through the spring. Again, those eight-week programs would be displaced on through the fall, and then construction would be completed. That fall season would again be displaced. And then, spring would be the grow-out. You really need to let these fields grow in for really a year to have them really take hold and, and then be able to be sustained long-term with, with the level of use that they get. So, then, that would be spring, and then in the fall, we, we would hope, weather permitting and everything goes according to plan, to have kind of a soft opening in the fall of 2020. And then, in the spring of 2023, we would have full use of the fields. And then, in the fall, we would actually, we would build into the process another overseed after that first full, a couple of seasons of use. I know it sounds like a long time, but like I said, it is the most efficient way to do it. This approach actually yields the least amount of interruption and displacement. It's three spring seasons, three fall seasons, but at the end of all of it, we are going to have fields that will, I think, be the envy of the region, instead of looking at other communities and saying, "Why not us?" So, I thank you for listening, and I, I urge you to support. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion under Article 16? And could the lights go back on, please? Name and address, please, at the green microphone.
Sure. James Ryan of 117 Crescent Road. Speaking strictly as a football coach, there's nothing more devastating than watching three of your best players go down to a broken leg, a fractured leg, and a torn ACL merely due to poor field conditions. When we're considering this, we must not only think of what the use is, but we also have to be looking at ultimately what costs are we shifting on, especially in terms of medical expenses and bills, if we don't take action. So, thank you.
Thank you. At the red microphone, yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Nolan Brown, 934 Maple Road. This plan takes away the two 60-foot baseball diamonds that are located on the Wolf Swamp Fields. With these gone, Little League will have literally only one field to have every practice, game, and tournament. And without a Little League, a feeder program for the high school level, Long Meadow baseball will continue to accelerate on its dying path in the town. We actually just won our first Western Mass title last season, and the program seems to be on the upswing, but if you take away practice fields and other, take away the ability for people to play Little League baseball, all that goes down the drain. So, this should be in three parts. One, to maintain the field. One, about the parking area. And three, to modify the layout of the field. And doing them all at once, you can just do them all at once with the ones that were voted yes upon. So, if you take away the fields, if you change the layout, then you're condemning a sport that's already kind of dying but is making a revival, you're condemning it to die. So, there's better ways to do it than the current layout and the current plan of the fields. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. At the green mic.
Kurt Friedman, 24 Ridge. Particular aspect of this proposal is the use of artesian wells, which I strongly support. It provides a healthier lawn. Well water has a pH greater than seven, so it helps alleviate the issues of acid rain. The lawns are healthier, there's less dust, less fine particulate. From a respiratory health point of view, there's a significant benefit. And there's a, the other thing is you have a healthier lawn without having to use chemicals. So, all in all, the use of well water, it's a very strong positive feature of this proposal. I encourage people to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there somebody at the yellow microphone?
Yes. Matt Landon, 64 Arzy Road. Barry or Steve, the, the question on the baseball diamonds, I just wanted to maybe ask you if you could fact-check that. Is that, is that accurate, what the gentleman said at the red mic?
Mr. Crane, or did you want to have somebody else?
I'd like to speak to that.
Just say your name. You couldn't hear the question? Is that it? The question was regarding the accuracy of the statements from the gentleman at the red microphone of, regarding the field loss.
Barry Jarvis, Director of Parks and Recreation. While this plan does call for the removal of two fields, there is Strope Field that is exclusively used for Little League. There's also two fields at Glenbrook Middle School. There's one that's shared at Turner Park. There's one to two at Bliss Park, depending on how you configure, and one at Blueberry Hill School, and one at Wolf Swamp School.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Alex Mitreski, 68 Ellington Street. I've been involved in this project for, for a while, and I thought maybe I can provide some additional background to what the town manager provided. I've been coaching soccer since 2011 in town, and over this course of period, I've seen the fields deteriorate, and primary reason is really because of the lack of irrigation. I do play pickup soccer in town. In 2015, I was playing Wolf Swamp Fields, I fell awkwardly, and I tore the, completely the ligaments on my left foot. That warranted a cast, walking boot, and physical therapy. It, it was a severe injury that took about two months for me to recover and be able to use my foot. I, I have personal experience of the, the terrible conditions at Wolf Swamp Field Road. I also started coaching field hockey in 2017, and then I realized that these fields are practically unplayable when it comes to field hockey. You can maybe wing it with soccer and lacrosse, but with field hockey, and, and the fact that you actually need grass so that ball can roll, it, they are unplayable. And, and certain towns such as Wilberham, they no longer come and visit us to play games at Wolf Swamp Fields because of the conditions of the field. So, that's, and we've, then we used to have a tournament of field hockey in town, and we've, we've lost that. And just a reminder, I think the town won, have won eight straight Division I Western Mass champions in field hockey. I guess, I wanted to kind of highlight the fact that, on the, in this room, we've talked about the DPW, we've talked about the senior center, all these things, facilities that we used to have, and we've concluded that they are no longer usable, and that we as citizens, although I'm not a senior citizen, or at least I thought also at the same time, you can think that my roads are clean, and why do we need a, a new DPW? The fact is that the facilities have been deteriorated to a point they're no longer usable, and they, they need to be addressed. As the town manager said, I think the fields is just another facility of the town. As the town manager said, I think the fields is just another facility of the town, and they've come to a point when they're no longer usable, and they need to be addressed. I, let's not kid ourselves. I think it's obvious, and I think everybody in this room shares the view that we pay high enough taxes, and we would love for our taxes to go down. I think it's, the amount that our taxes will increase in the amount of $20 or so is a small amount compared to the moral obligation that we have in this town to provide some basic needs to the children that want to play sports in our field. So please support this project. It's, like I said, a moral obligation to our children of our town. Thank you.
Thank you. I recognize, are you at the yellow microphone, and then the red?
Good evening. My name is Kristen Carnahan, 311 Farmington Road. I appreciate the interest in stewardship of our green infrastructure, but I have three questions. May I ask them consecutively? The first is to reclarify what planning went on with regards to the field, the number of fields that are being added or removed, and how that reflects our current need for the breadth of athletic programs and recreational activities that are currently using these community resources. The second is, while safety was clearly a bullet point on the PowerPoint and one we all appreciate, if someone could speak to the details to the parking lot that is now within the existing green space, what safety parameters have been created so that there isn't the introduction of additional safety concerns with pedestrians accessing the snack shop or dropping off, et cetera? And lastly, if we could speak a little bit more to the placement of the fields, both in the spring and the fall seasons, that current conceptual rendering does not provide easily the dimensions that are required and how the configurations are being maximized in the inclusion of all of the visitors and participants that would be watching.
Thank you. So for the first question regarding the planning, I will direct either Ms. Jarvis or Mr. Crane. For the second question, I would like our police chief to address safety concerns, if possible. If not, Mr. Crane. And for the third, the placement of the fields, again, either Ms. Jarvis or Mr. Crane. Mr. Crane.
Now you got me all turned around thinking it was... So the second question about the parking area, so it's really compared to what we have today, where there are undefined drive lanes, undefined parking stalls, and virtually no barrier, visual or otherwise, between the parking area and the road. And so at the end of all of this, you'll have, and then two areas of parking. So people go through the first area, and then they don't see a space, and then they go over to the second area. And, you know, and there's people walking throughout there. Under the current, under the plan that we're proposing, there will be that barrier between, and the parking along Wolf Swamp will be reduced. And then you'll have a more intuitive layout, so people will drive in. Instead of driving through that parking area, they'll go immediately to the centralized parking lot, which has defined spaces, defined drive lanes, a more intuitive circular, internal circulation throughout the lot. And I believe there are guardrails around the outside of it, so pedestrians will know to walk around the outside of the parking lot to get to the fields or the concession stands. And I'm sorry you have to repeat the first question.
Well, it's on the clarification of planning reflecting the current need of fields for our sports. Does Mr. Jarvis want to answer that question?
Well, I'll ask Barry. I know she wants to answer the third question, but I do know that the survey that I referenced informed that certainly Barry's experience in managing our parks and rec programs for many years helped inform this. And then, again, we have, we had a consultant who specializes in athletic facilities who helped us with the layouts. But I'll ask Barry to come up and talk in more detail about that.
I had to bring my cheat sheet because the field dimensions actually vary on the season. So what we're looking at now is lacrosse, and we're not yielding any additional fields. I want to be very clear about that. We are taking the field dimensions, and there's different age groups, whether we're talking about the spring or the fall, that utilize the fields. Obviously, the smaller, the younger the participants, the smaller the fields. So we worked with the landscape architect to develop as much field as we can put in with safety barriers. The coaches have to be on one side, and the onlookers on the other side, and we have to keep that consistent. So when we develop that, just to give you an idea, the largest fields we have would be in the fall, and that would be our field hockey, and it's 150 by 300 feet. So those are pretty large. So if you look at the other design, this one's a spring design, but if you look at the fall design, those fields are larger. So not a very clear answer, but it does vary, and we did take all of those factors into account.
And regarding the public safety question, potential safety issues with the new parking lot? Chief Stankovits?
Looking at the, looking at the parking lot layout right now, it seems like, like Steve has mentioned already, the town manager, it's very intuitive. As far as the usefulness and the traveling of motor vehicles, again, we can't predict about youth running through the parking spaces. But the good thing about it is, it was a parking lot, people will be traveling slower. So we will be avoiding Wolf Swamp Field, which we have cars usually at speeds of 30 to 35 miles an hour.
Does that answer your question, or did you have a follow-up?
So it answers it in part, and I apologize, I had one more question, so do I get back in line?
No, go ahead, ask it now.
It is also with regards to the fact that the parking lot to the far side has been removed for green space, and I'm hoping someone could speak to now the limited access to the trails and conservation land that are at the rear of the Wolf Swamp Athletic Fields.
In the design, the fence is a, I believe, a two-foot fence, and it's very aesthetic. It's a park-style fence, and it will be accessible. The thing it will not be accessible to, which is actually a good thing, are the ATVs that ride through. If any of you have been there, when you've seen all-terrain vehicles go through, it will limit them. So that's a good thing, but it will not have any limitations to access.
Yes, sir, at the red mic? Thank you. Sure. At the red mic, yes, sir?
Mark Haber, 78 Quintetuck Road. I want to support this plan, and I actually came here thinking I was going to support this plan, and then I've seen the design. I'm a coach for multiple sports, primarily right now baseball, but also football. I've coached soccer. I have kids that play in the soccer program. I'm also an emergency physician, and I understand the problems that are on all of our fields throughout town. It's not just Wolf Swamp. Field deterioration, holes, divots, what have you, poor field conditions, lack of irrigation, can contribute to injuries, but injuries are going to occur whether we have the best facilities or not. That's just the nature of sports. That being said, the plan as it is set right now will definitively injure baseball in this town. There is no question that this will seriously injure baseball. With the current conditions, the current field availability, I can't even get practice time for my youth team to practice. We can only play games, we play games at Turner. I find places in between baseball fields, between, at Turner Park, if you've been there, there are two baseball fields. There's a little narrow strip that has now actually been replaced by soccer and part of it. And I have my team practice in the middle there. Meanwhile, we have people hitting balls over our heads. Wolf Swamp Field, that's the two primary places where Little League plays all of their AAA games. They have Strople Field, that's, that's true, but they can only have Strople Field during a certain period of time because there's no lights there. The other fields that you had mentioned, Glenbrook, there's one field there that is barely playable. There are two softball fields there. There's a third, a final field in the back, I guess that's the northwest corner, that is essentially not playable. Bliss cannot be used by any kids above the age of probably seven or eight or so. I think single A's played there and T-ball's played there because it's absolutely too dangerous. There's just not enough space for any thrown balls or fly balls. It would seriously injure children. Currently, the way we have our baseball setup, we do not have enough field availability. This plan destroys baseball in Long Meadow. This plan absolutely destroys baseball in Long Meadow, there is no question. Unless we come up with some other fields, create other fields for our players, it's just not doable. I don't want to spend, I personally don't want to spend 1.5 million or what have you on this plan when it doesn't take care of all of our kids. So I would urge people, yes, we absolutely need to renovate our fields. This plan is not the correct plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, at the green microphone.
Hank Casagrande, 172 Longview Drive. There's a lot of talk about injuries, so let's talk about them. I'm a P.A. at New England Orthopedics. I've been there for 20 years, seeing and treating all of the injuries that everyone's talking about. They range from simple ankle sprains to ankle fractures, ACL tears, wrist fractures, shoulder dislocations. I see it. I've been treating it for 20 years. It happens on this field. There's a very good study from Penn State University that showed that 20% of injuries are directly related to the field conditions. I have parents coming up to me routinely after practices. I'm a coach in Long Meadow for a lacrosse program. Routinely, parents are asking me, so-and-so got hurt, can you look at him because of these fields? They're in desperate need. I urge you to support it. Thanks.
At the yellow microphone, then the red.
Thank you. Steve Weiss, I am the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. As over the last several years...
Mr. Weiss, would this be in favor or opposed or a question?
It's ultimately, give me a moment. It's a, not, it's neither, actually. It's informational about the CPC's position on this.
Go ahead.
That's come up in the presentation by Mr. Crane. Over the past several years, CPC has been supporting and approving projects for the fields. As Mr. Crane indicated, we approved $80,000 for installation of a well for irrigation, and $250,000 last year on a series of private applications, and a town application, and $100,000 this year. During the course of evaluating these applications, and maybe at the risk of being a little presumptuous, our committee convened a meeting of a number of the players in town, members of the select board, finance committee, capital planning committee, park and rec board, and several other interested parties. Two things did become really evident during all of that. The first is that we found out, had a number of questions to answer, and one of them is that the 1.54 million dollars, and this is important to clarify for everybody, that does include the money, that 1.54 million dollars to do the fields, includes money that's been previously allocated for, by the CPC. And then the second is that everybody also, I think, at that meeting agreed that the most efficient way to handle these renovations was by doing it in one single phase, both logistically and financially. So ultimately, what we, what we did at the May 1st meeting is that we voted to affirm, or maybe to reaffirm, that the funds that are available, that we've already allocated and that we've, that are up for allocation tonight, are available for this project. So that the funds that have not been used, and I think Mr. Crane's number was about 322,000, if his math is right, and I think it is, that will be available to fund the project and reduce the amount ultimately borrowed. But we did not take a vote to approve, to weigh in on Article 16 itself. We felt that because it didn't directly impact the use of Community Preservation Act funds, that it was beyond our purview or beyond our agenda to take a position on this application. We do support the fields, and we have since the first applications came before us three years ago. But I just wanted to clarify that for the body.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Crane?
Nolan Brown again, 934 Maple Road. I just wanted to say that I've played baseball here all my life, and the only time I've ever played either in AAA or the major league level was on Wolf Swamp or Strople. The other fields are not playable, as the gentleman before me said, or not playable because of, you know, LBA reasons, whatever. So taking away two-thirds of the available fields, terrible. We all know we would need to redo Wolf Swamp Fields. That's, no, nobody's arguing, we don't have to do that. But I have it written here that we just request you vote no, but request that the master plan be revised to address the needs of various recreational athletic programs, and then have the article reintroduced at the next town meeting. So, yes, to amend, amend the article, we'd just like to keep pretty much exactly what's on the field currently, and then make it better as everybody wants, again. And then go from there. So that would...
So let me just make sure I'm clear. You read something really fast at the end, and I didn't quite catch all that.
Okay.
Were you making a motion to amend? Is that what you were doing? Or were you making a suggestion that the town vote no and then do this again? I didn't understand.
The second.
The second. Okay, so there's no motion to amend?
Yes.
Okay.
And then go through at the next meeting with an unamended plan for the fields.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, at the yellow microphone.
I'm Mary Roganis, 22 Warren Terrace. I have an amendment to propose, I will present it to you.
Okay.
I move that the redesigned fields retain two baseball fields.
Move that, you move that the, to amend where?
To amend the proposal so that the redesigned fields will retain two baseball fields.
Could you bring that to me, please?
No.
Could you, could you bring that to the microphone, please?
Excuse me, Madam Moderator, we need some clarification here on a couple of these things.
I'm going to be providing that once I see the actual amendment. I will provide, I will, excuse me, I will provide the clarification once I see the amendment. Could you bring it forward, please? There's a motion on the floor to amend the motion, the main motion on Article 16 to require that the redesigned fields will retain two baseball fields. Is there a second? Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. This is discussion on the amendment proposal only. You may speak to it, Ms. Roganis.
Thank you. And to the members of the town meeting, or to the residents who are at the town meeting. I've been going to town meetings for a very long time, and it's my experience that the attending citizens are interested in doing good for the town, and they do not like to hurt any of the residents of the town. And the proposed redesign, as displayed, is in favor of a lot of soccer sports, which are the growing popular activity in town. But even according to the description of the baseball inclusion, baseball players and coaches and families have been told that baseball doesn't matter very much because they can go other places. And redesigning to retain those two fields would be more of an equitable approach to all of the people of the town who are sports people.
Okay, this is on the motion to amend. Mr. Santinello, you had requested that the finance committee has a recommendation on this amendment? No? Okay. Yes, at the red microphone.
Hi, my name is, whoa, hi. My name is Lynn Pantusco-Hench. I'm here on behalf of the Long Meadows Soccer Association, and we were very much prepared to speak in favor of the article itself. In regard to this motion for the amendment, I would just like to add, ask for some clarification. Forgive me for jumping in prematurely, I'm a bit antsy, but... Forgive me for jumping in prematurely, I'm a bit antsy, but I do want to extend the point of view that I don't think anyone in here wants to see anything negative happen to baseball in particular. As Ms. Jarvis explained, she listed all of those baseball fields, DePippo, Strople, Glenbrook, Turner, and Wolf Swamp. So I think there's a little bit of a mischaracterization, which is why I wanted to articulate which size diamonds we're talking about. And this is with all due respect and friendly with the folks who are up here. This isn't meant to be combative at all. The other thing I would mention, two other pieces of this, we have two baseball organizations in town, and that presents, I think, sometimes a little lack of collaboration in our baseball community. I'm not going to get any further into that because I don't have the expertise to do so, but I think that is part of the field access and availability, that these leagues are operating sort of simultaneously on shared space. But with that, and again, I don't think anyone from soccer or lacrosse or field hockey who are here to support this effort are trying to suggest that our sports are more important or growing at terribly different rates than some of the other sports. But I do think enrollment does speak volumes. So when we look at the proportionality at which we have for enrollment, so I would like for Ms. Jarvis to please clarify for us the baseball enrollment for both organizations. And I haven't heard mention of softball because those are baseball, but that is also just boys and whichever girls play baseball. The other piece of this, too, is that the field structure outside of which diamonds remained are not fixed. So while you see a rendering up there with the proposed, what it'll look like in the fall and the spring, the great part about grass is that we can reline it at any given time for the fields in particular. Now, I realize the relining and structuring of a baseball field is a little bit different, but those are renderings, those are estimates. We'll still all get together as youth sport leadership, I hope with Park and Rec in the town, to continue to refine those plans to meet the best interests of the children in our community.
Yes, sir.
So my question for clarification is baseball enrollment. Soccer, for instance, has between 800 and 900.
We have somebody who's waiting in line at the yellow microphone. We'll get to him first for his question. You had spoken against it. We can have your question answered in just a moment. I just want to get the people who've been standing first.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. William Welch, 25 Meadowbrook Road. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Crane and maybe a follow-up for Mr. Pasterzik.
You can ask those questions all at once.
So, Mr. Crane, do I understand the master plan to essentially take off the table, meaning we're not going to be able to use the Wolf Swamp fields for two years?
Could you just ask all of your questions at once, please? Thank you.
My second question is, can you address the planning behind the displacement of the eight girls' lacrosse teams, the six boys' lacrosse teams, the four baseball teams, and the other non-organized events that occur on Wolf Swamp? Third, can you address the cost associated with what we're going to do if we don't have the Wolf Swamp fields for two years? And that has a two-part prong to it, which, number one, would be, will there be user fees assessed to the parents of the teams, or is the town going to pick up the cost? Then my last question is, has anyone contacted the surrounding communities to figure out if we have a place to go, or any private vendors as to what we're going to do in the next two years?
Mr. Crane.
To answer your first question, as best as I can track them, yes, we are in effect saying that the fields will be unusable for two years. In terms of the planning process, I would ask Barry for help on that question. I know that she has been in communication with the various sports leagues and stakeholders, and I know they are doing some scenario building as we speak as a part of this process. Obviously, no arrangements have specifically been made because we don't have approval for the funding. I wasn't here in 2011 when this, but a fair amount of that field space was used as a staging area for our wood debris, and I think that there was, it wasn't as comprehensive, but I think Barry and the sports leagues had to kind of adjust on the fly, and they were able to make do. And I look at that as kind of a smaller example of the flexibility that could be there. In terms of the fees and things like that, I'll have to defer to Barry on those questions, but yes, that planning process is underway.
So, Ms. Jarvis, could you address those questions and the question from the woman prior, please? Thank you, if you can.
So in terms of enrollment numbers, again, I have my cheat sheet. In terms of soccer, soccer has approximately 825 participants. Their primary location is Wolf Swamp Field. Their secondary is Glenbrook Middle School. Little League has 375 participants. I would say only a portion of those players use Wolf Swamp fields. Little League has a number of fields in town. We also have Blueberry and Wolf Swamp schools that have fields that are not in great condition, but we have been, I have personally been in contact with the president of Little League to have that be part of this discussion. So the two fields that would be displaced, and there's three fields there, by the way, only two we're talking about displacing for the betterment of the entire community in terms of field maximization. Those other two fields would be placed in different areas. Boys' lacrosse has 230 participants. Girls' lacrosse has approximately 200. And Long Meadow baseball has 110. I don't have statistics on the other leagues that play at Wolf Swamp fields. This project would not impact that directly, only during deconstruction period because the 90-foot field, the 90-foot diamond would remain. And I would add that Ultimate Frisbee has approximately 90 children, and that is a high school team, but they do use Wolf Swamp. And I apologize, I forgot the other question.
Mr. Welch, you asked a question, please.
So, I believe we were just told that you're in the planning phase as it relates to what to do with all the teams in the next two years. So can you tell us what the planning is as it relates to where all the teams will be going for practices and games?
Yes, it was intentional in the PowerPoint to illustrate the number of teams. If I illustrate 230 in boys' lacrosse, not all of those teams directly play at Wolf Swamp. Some play at Williams Middle School and other places. We've identified our biggest impact will be practices. We can make accommodations to play all of our games away. We would have to most likely pay half of the referee or official fees for those games, but we would do that if we hosted those anyway. We would waive usage fees during the transition time because we would assume that those associations would have to take those fees and put them toward perhaps renting space. We do have relationships with other towns. For example, we share space with East Long Meadow, frequently, the Lennox Space Heritage Park, and we do rent from time to time. Boys' lacrosse and soccer are examples of that.
Last follow-up?
Yeah, I do have a follow-up. And that follow-up is, so can you tell us that today you have a plan to place all these different teams by the spring of 2020, which is when we saw there will be no use of Wolf Swamp?
I can tell you that the associations, and I have been talking for about 18 months on this, and they are well aware, and we've had discussions about plans, but it would be the associations that would make the provisions.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, Mr. Welch, we actually have a bylaw that restricts the amount of times somebody can speak, and you're at that limit. And so the meeting would have to vote to allow you to speak a fourth time. I'd like to get to the other people to have their questions and comments first, please. Yes.
Mark Haber, 78 Quintetuck Road. So again, I'd be in favor of this amendment as it would preserve two of the three ball fields at the park. Currently, there are two 60-foot diamonds, and there's a 90-foot diamond. 90-foot diamond's what major league uses, that's what the high school uses, that's what the senior leagues use. The 65-foot is what most of Little League would use, and half of the travel team in the LBA. The fields that we've mentioned at, I think it was Wolf Swamp School, Blueberry School, I've used them as a T-ball coach. You don't really need a field to play T-ball. You can do that in my backyard, you can do it in all of our backyards. But for baseball beyond that level, you really need to have a field. You cannot have grass. It's not played on grass, it's played on dirt. There is infield for softball, obviously, is an all-dirt infield. For baseball, as you've seen on TV, for those of you who've watched baseball before or seen a game, you know that there's dirt, and that can't be transitioned, it can't be moved around from field to field. So that would need to be set in stone. If we were to preserve two of the three, I think that's a viable alternative to the proposal that was initially proposed. The changes, I wouldn't, I guess, at this point in time, I would ask Madam Moderator if we could specify the size of those diamonds now? Would that be necessary, or would that not be necessary?
I don't think it would. That's up to the citizens who proposed the amendment, whether they want to specify the size.
I don't necessarily think that it would be 100% necessary, but by preserving two of the three fields, I think it would be a nice alternative, an acceptable alternative to the current plan. It will affect, obviously, the other fields there. That being said, is, there really is no other alternative for baseball in Long Meadow. Those other fields that Ms. Jacobs mentioned, they're just not, they're not appropriate-sized fields for baseball. And as she had mentioned, there are roughly, I think, 500, 400 to 500 kids who play baseball in the town and softball. So it's not a small potato, it's not a small number of kids that are being displaced by this. So I would ask the town to vote affirmative for this amendment to the original article. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, the yellow microphone.
Alex Mitreski, 68 Ellington Street. I'm sort of sympathetic to what the issues that baseball is raising tonight, but I think what they're raising and addressing is a different point, which is-
Do you have a question?
We have a-
Sir, do you have a question?
Can I make a statement regarding the motion?
You can make a statement in favor or opposed, but unless really our board can make, thanks.
I kept going back and forth. I am sympathetic that they feel that they're losing a field. I think what they're raising is that, the issue that there is a chronic shortage of field space in this town. And that's something that we cannot solve today. What we can solve today is to improve the fields at Wolf Swamp Field. What we can talk about is figure out best ways that we can reconfigure those fields to accommodate baseball and soccer and lacrosse. Couple of facts for, I think for the town residents. I'm a member of the soccer association. In our offseason in spring, we have 19 teams. We have two fields in town that we can use for those 19 fields. We rent fields in East Long Meadow. We use Blueberry and other places where we can find, I feel really bad when we have to take some space from lacrosse boys or girls because both of my kids play those sports. So that is the core issue. We cannot make up the space. We can certainly work and figure out the best way to use this space. I'm not speaking on behalf of the LSA, but speaking as me, I'd rather give up a soccer field and have actual grass on that field because that is a central need for that field. And if that's what it takes, that's fine. But I'm not in favor of delaying this for another six months because that's another six months where potentially another kid can have an injury on that field. Thank you.
Thank you. At the, which microphone are you at? Are you lined up?
I have a question.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Karen Tolman, 585 Wolf Swamp Road. My question's for the Finance Committee. I wanted to know why they didn't recommend this article, but instead they recommended Article 26 that takes care of the field at Wolf Swamp step by step as opposed to all at once.
Mr. Santinello?
Thank you. There's a few reasons why it has nothing to do with the validity of the project. In fact, if Article 26 passes, the Finance Committee will have supported and endorsed over $400,000 on the project itself. Some of the articles that we already passed, there's mentions of Moody's, for example, were taking on debt service for the project. And that was one of the concerns, taking on additional debt when we haven't funded the Council on Aging yet. We already have that plan in place, it's incremental. So we felt that the plan was being addressed, or that field was being addressed, or the incremental planning. Additionally, there's about, estimated by DPW, minimally $60,000 a year that will be required in future budgets to maintain those fields once they're done. That is not in our budget, obviously, today because the fields aren't done as well, or aren't done at this point in time. And I think the other consideration was that we were looking at the potential negative impact of doing additional bonding at this point in time. Those were the reasons, nothing to do with the validity of the project.
Thank you. Yes. Anyone else wish to speak on the motion to amend? Okay, seeing nobody, we will come direct, yes, okay.
Madam Moderator, Maury Garrett, 133 Tedford Drive. I just wanted to lend my support to one of the folks I assistant-coached with in baseball. I actually coach, I've coached T-ball for five years. All my kids play T-ball. I coach, coach pitch baseball on the Wolf Swamp fields as well as the Glenbrook fields. I coach now AA baseball on both the Glenbrook fields and the Strople fields, and I also assist for an LBA team that coaches, that plays in the Turner fields as well as on Glenbrook Field. What I can say is, everything that Mr. Haber's conveyed to town meeting is 100% accurate. The, in fact, this past weekend, I had a practice scheduled for my AA team on Strople Field. I went to the field, we started a practice, and another, I believe it may have been a Little League team, came to the field, and I had to have a conversation with the coach about the fact that they had, they believed that they had reserved that field. And this is something that happens all the time. Earlier in the season, I had a practice scheduled. There were no baseball fields available, so I had to make arrangements to use a softball field to coach my baseball team. And while we were at the field, a softball team arrived and said that they had the field. And this is an ongoing issue for all of the baseball and softball teams in the town. There are not enough baseball fields. There is the, for the kids that participate in baseball, the number of fields that are available are already woefully insufficient. They're insufficient in their quality, they're insufficient in their number. I could not believe I heard a mention of Glenbrook Field having two baseball fields. Glenbrook Field has one baseball field and two softball fields and one T-ball field. I've coached five years there. That field is serviced, I mean, I guess they cut the grass, but that field, if you looked on a satellite, you would hardly even be able to see it. There's no dugout, there's no benches, it's not a usable field for anything other than T-ball. And there's the same thing at Bliss. There's one baseball field, and then the other field is a T-ball field that is really not usable for any other level. So again, there are not enough baseball fields in Long Meadow, and to take three fields away is going to be, is going to put a dramatic detrimental impact on baseball in Long Meadow.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to amend?
One more.
Yep.
Jamie Hench, 40 Eastham Lane. Just on, just comments to the previous gentleman here. Bad coordination shouldn't be a reason why we spend money on one field or the other. I think we've got to sit back, look at what we've done. We haven't maintained our fields. What the gentleman just said is, we don't have enough? I think we have too many. But guess what? We didn't take care of what we have. If you go around this town and look at all the fields that we are not using in baseball, softball, and go around because of the poor condition, because we did not spend the money to maintain them, similar to what we did in Wolf Swamp, that is why we are here where we are. I live next to Strople Field, it's my backyard. We are not utilizing all the fields from a baseball standpoint, we just have not taken care of them. So it isn't, it isn't, do we have this or that? The one thing I'll leave you lastly with, with Wolf Swamp, there shouldn't be any baseball fields there. Go stand out there and watch a game on one sport or the other, and watch baseballs flying at your head. From a safety standpoint, I think we've got to step back, reevaluate, say, where do we have fields? What do we need to repurpose? As opposed to saying, we're taking away fields. We're taking away fields because we have five baseball fields that we can't use because it's unsafe and unsuitable for kids to play. So we need to clarify, fields are going away, those are just usable fields. It doesn't mean that there's fields that have been purposed for baseball around this town. You go to every school around this town, and there are baseball fields, we just don't care about them. So we've got to figure out what is important to us, and that is really the question that I wanted to make sure everybody followed because there is plenty of fields for the number of kids playing baseball in the- number of kids playing baseball in this town, in my opinion.
Yes, sir, the green mic.
Matt Lan...
Please.
Matt Landon, 64 Ardsley Road, and I'm the president of the Long Meadow Boys Youth Lacrosse Organization. For anyone who's spent time on the Wolf Swamp Fields, the, the photos didn't do justice here tonight. There's, it is a deteriorated, dangerous spot. We need to act on this now. An enormous amount of energy went into this plan and we've conferred, based upon the feedback and the input, and if making an addition, bringing another baseball field into the proposal moves us forward and helps to solve our field crisis, speaking from Boys Lacrosse...
Is this in favor of the motion to amend?
And soccer. This is in favor of the motion to amend, yes.
Okay.
So, we, we need to do something now. This, this conversation has been going on for 10 years and if we don't have a concrete, coordinated plan that everyone buys into and, and takes care of all sports, we're not going to make any progress here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to amend?
Sarah Mammo, on the spot, I forget my address, 55 Pleasant View. I just, the clarification I'm looking for now is, can you now, after all this discussion, help me know what the amendment is?
Yes.
If I vote for the amendment, I am voting for Article 16 plus a reconfiguration proposal. Is that correct?
This, this particular vote would be whether to amend Article 16... Do you have the language? To include, to require in the redesign that the redesigned fields will retain two baseball fields. So, that's all we're voting on first. After we vote on that, then we will vote on Article 16.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome. If we're ready to vote, kindly have a seat. If you, if you're ready to vote, please have a seat. Thank you. This is the motion to amend. It requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion to amend, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your yellow cards. The motion passes by majority affirmative vote. Any further discussion? Or are we ready to vote on the motion as amended? Let's vote. We're ready to vote on the motion as amended. This is the main motion on Article 16 as amended. This requires a two-thirds majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. The motion passes by two-thirds declaration, majority affirmative vote. Ms. Angelides.
I move the town vote to appre, raise and appropriate the sum of $183,625 for the purpose of paying the FY 2020 District Improvement Financing Debt Service.
Is there a second? Motion's been made in second, and you may speak to it.
The District Improvement Financing Statute, MGL, Chapter 40-Q, requires the town to annually budget for the debt service related to the Dwight Road Maple Street DIF program. In FY 2020, 100% of the incremental property tax revenues associated with the town's Dwight Road Improvement District will be used as the funding source of the DIF fund. Any excess in the DIF fund at fiscal year-end will be returned to the general fund. Note that FY 2020 is the last year where 100% of the incremental property taxes associated with the DIF project will be earmarked for the DIF debt service.
Recommendation, please? Finance Committee?
It's recommended by the Finance Committee.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article 18.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $478,362 from the state for highway improvements under the authority of MGL Chapter 90, including funds to be received in fiscal year 2020 or any other applicable law, and to authorize the select board, if necessary, to apply for, accept, and borrow in anticipation of state aid for such projects expended.
Is there a second? You may speak to it, Mr. Low.
The state annually allocates the town a sum of money to be spent on town roads. This amount must be appropriated by town meeting. The town spends the money first and is reimbursed by the state upon completion of the process, the project.
Any, I'm sorry, Finance Committee, go ahead.
The article's recommended.
Any further discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. The motion passes, unanimous affirmative vote. Article 19, Mr. Low.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $94,667 from the state for highway improvements under the authority of, can I just read that? Under the authority of MGL, MGL Chapter 90, including funds to be received in fiscal year 2020 or any other applicable laws, and to authorize the se, select board, if necessary, to apply for, accept, and borrow in anticipation of state aid for such projects.
Did you expend? Are you looking for another word there, Mr. Low? The last word?
Expend.
Thank you. And the motion's been made and exacted. Mr. Santinello?
The ma, recommended, the article's recommended.
Further discussion? Come directly to a vote. This requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion passes by majority declar, two-thirds majority declaration, affirmative vote. Mister, Article 20, Mr. Low.
I move that the town vote to transfer $1,178.50 from the receipts reserved for appropriation account Transportation Infrastructure Enhancement Trust Fund to the special account for traffic improvements at the Williams and Bliss Triangle.
Is there a second? You may speak to it.
This amount repr, this amount represents funds received from Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund pursuant to ST 2016 C-187 Section 8 CI. The funds come from fees collected by the Commonwealth from transportation network services, e.g., Uber and Lyft, and must be used to address the impact of transportation network services on municipal roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure or any other public purpose substantially related to the operation of the transportation network services in town, including other programs that support alternative modes of transportation. The amount of funds is based on the number of rides that originate in Long Meadow. The town is currently working with PV, PVBC on a transportation study of the Williams Bliss Triangle area.
Finance Committee recommendation?
It's recommended, the article's recommended.
Thank you. No. Okay. We're ready to come to a vote then. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Mr. Low?
I move that the town vote on Articles 21 through 31 by consent agenda.
Okay, so the motion is to move, excuse me, please. The way this will work will be that I will read off the numbers of all of the articles. If anybody would like to take, anyone wishing to consider an article separately shall call out "hold" if they so wish, and I will set that number aside. 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31. All right, so the motion has been made for consent agenda for Articles 21 through 31. Is, I don't know if I asked if there's a second, but for formality's sake, is there a second? Yes, all right. This requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards? Thank you. Anyone opposed, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion passes by majority affirmative vote. We're now taking up Article 42. Article 42, would the citizen petitioner come to the front, please? We have to keep moving. Ms. Chason, name and address and make the motion.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Chason. I live at 236 Crestview Circle and I move to, I move the town to adopt Article 42 to amend the town zoning bylaws.
Are, are you moving to approve the article as written?
Yes, as written.
All right. It, so the, the motion has been to approve the article as written. This waives the reading of the article. Is there a second? Okay.
A second.
You may speak to that motion.
Okay, yes, I'd like to speak. This article was introduced by citizen's petition for the purpose of addressing the health and safety of the town's residents with regard to the siting, building, and operation of gas facilities within the town boundaries. The Long Meadow Pipeline Awareness Group, through a citizen's petition, has submitted a proposal to amend the town bylaws with the addition of Article 15. The catalyst for this proposal is the group's knowledge that there are plans to build and operate a gas facility plant, sorry, on the grounds of the Long Meadow Country Club in an area immediately adjacent to homes and a school. The town, under its current zoning bylaws, lacks the ability to impose any conditions or regulations to monitor a facility of this type. Safety and health concerns mandate that the town be able to regulate the operations for the overall well-being of our community. This bylaw, if passed tonight, would allow the town to institute a series of reviews and conditions for the operation of the gas facilities that are necessary to protect our town, its residents, and its environment. Specifically, it would require an initial comprehensive health impact assessment to identify any potential health threats for the purpose of mitigating the negative health impacts on residents. This bylaw also requires the operator of any gas facility to provide the town with a preparedness and prevention contingency plan to deal with such everyday problems as discharge of harmful gases into the air we breathe, pipeline leakage, spill containment, and potential contamination of public water and wells. Under this bylaw, the planning board is also able to require that any site plan include a showing of the locations of structures within one mile of the facility and detail the impact of any explosion or other emergency situation that could destroy or otherwise impact those structures. When spilt, the operator would be required to monitor the facility for toxic air pollutants and on a monthly basis, and the town will receive all such reports. Under current bylaws, there is no requirement that such information be provided to the town. While certain types of environmental reports are provided to state and federal entities, there is no requirement that either the state or the federal entity share or submit the reports to the town. Further conditions are placed on the operator by limiting the level of noise and light disruption to the surrounding environment and allows the town to place ongoing conditions to regulate the level of noise. The entire focus of this article is to reduce the risks posed by such facilities and provide safeguards for the health and safety of all of our residents. Massachusetts Constitution, Article 97, provides that, in quote, "The people of the Commonwealth have the right to clean air and water, freedom from excessive and unnecessary noise," end quote. This bylaw is needed to provide assurances that Long Meadow is able to promote and protect its residents' rights to air that is breathable, water that is drinkable, and have the ability to enjoy their homes in open space with as little intrusion as possible. And then, what I'd like to do...
Speak into the mic. Are you...
What I'd like to do is make a motion to add certain amendments to the article as it is written. They are, they were added as clarification for the purpose of allowing the town to totally understand any small questions within the article and...
So, the mo, the motion is to amend the article as it's, and it's displayed above. And so, so could you just read the specific items that you're going to be adding in? Thank you.
Okay, so, as the town moderator has indicated, the warrant is displayed above and all the modifications or amendments are in red on the, the board. So, I will read as written specifically.
So, it's as designated, so just go through each section. Was that? No, just indicate that it is amended as such.
So, in Section A, the clarification, excuse me, we added that in addition to site and design review, these facilities are required to obtain a special permit from the planning board as designated in Articles 2 and 10 of the Long Meadow zoning bylaws. Then in Section D, we've added that the town of Long Meadows, I'm sorry, in Section...
C.
C.
Yep.
That the, this refers to the comprehensive health impact assessment, that the town of Long Meadows Select Board receives copies of all monitoring and environmental reports required under this provision. That was for purposes of clarification. Section D, we've added the two comments, one, that the monitor, the monthly monitoring is by the operator and at the operator's expense, and two, that the town of Long Meadows Select Board receives copies of all monitoring and environmental reports, including but not limited to reports submitted by, to federal age, federal and state regulatory agencies. And the last amendment is Section J, severability. This has to do, this is added into all laws. It is the intention of this bylaw, I'm sorry, I can't...
He...
It is the intention of this bylaw that each separate provision of this article shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein, and it is further the intention that any provision of this article be declared invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction. The remaining provision of this article shall remain valid and enforceable. So, I move to...
The, the motion has been made. Is there a second to amend? Okay. Did you want to speak to the amendments or, okay. This is a discussion of the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? Okay. Seeing none, this will require a simple majority to amend and then we will come back to the article to discuss it, as amended or not as amended. Could the lights be turned back on, please? Is someone checking on the lights? We don't want to vote in the dark.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor of the motion to amend, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your yellow cards. The motion to amend passes by majority affirmative vote. The floor is now open for discussion on the main motion as amended. Oh, I'm sorry, forgive me. Planning Board recommendation. Forgive me. Mr. Colton? Mr. Colton.
Yes, my name is Bruce Colton. I live at ninety-one Whitman Road. I'm on the Long Meadow Planning Board.
Louder, please.
Just be right in the mic, yep.
Okay, I'm giving you the recommendation on this article from the Long Meadow Planning Board. By a vote of five to nothing, the planning board unanimously recommends that the town meeting adopt this addition to the town's zoning bylaws. While the four proposed additions and applications to the bylaw were not formally before the planning board, it is aware of the suggested additions and supports them as well. Those are the changes you actually just voted to accept. Generally speaking, industrial facilities would not be allowed in a residential zone in Long Meadow. However, a seven-word clause in our bylaws listing, quote, "Any public utility service building or installation," unquote, as an allowed use in a residential zone arguably supports the construction of this facility. While our site and design review bylaw would apply to this facility, that bylaw, written in nineteen ninety-one, did not contemplate a facility of this nature being proposed for Long Meadow, and does not give the town the tools necessary to monitor and regulate the very real safety hazards posed by this facility. Essentially, no regulations can mitigate the dangers of an explosion. However, less serious hazards can be dealt with. In addition to unintended gas leaks, metering stations, such as the one proposed for Long Meadow, relieve gas pressure by regularly blowing off the gas into the air we breathe. The released gas contains carcinogens such as benzene linked to lymphomas and formaldehyde linked to leukemia, as well as radioactive elements like radon and radioactive lead, mercaptan, a flammable compound that can cause headaches, coughing, and shortness of breath, PCBs, NOX, and heavy metals such as lead and mercury. Children and the elderly are particularly vulnerable to these regularly released contaminants. Children are at risk of an increase in allergies, respiratory infections, asthma, and learning disabilities. The elderly will risk an exacerbation of COPD, congestive heart disease, myocardial infarction, and diabetes. Without the passage of this proposed bylaw, Long Meadow will have no means to monitor and institute safeguards to protect the health and safety of our community. The planning board strongly recommends the adoption of this proposed bylaw.
Thank you. And I'm just going to remind folks to keep remarks short, and when there's been no new information that has been added, that you stop talking. Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Morantz, and I live at one-seventeen Rugby Road. I'm speaking tonight as Chair of the Long Meadow Pipeline Awareness Group and as a concerned citizen. I ask that you vote yes on Article forty-two, as this zoning bylaw will help protect the health and safety of the Long Meadow community by establishing strict emissions regulations for any gas facility that's built in our town. Because some audience members may wonder about the need for such regulation, I'd like to briefly address some health and safety issues attached to expanding gas infrastructure, particularly in Long Meadow, a town that's ninety-seven percent developed, with seventy-five percent of its households already gas customers. To begin the discussion, we need to understand that nearly fifty percent of what we call natural gas is, in fact, fracked gas that contains a wide range of pollutants such as methane, benzene, formaldehyde, nitrous oxide, radioactive lead, and radon. Because raw methane is colorless and odorless, many of us have assumed that there are no gas leaks because we don't smell gas. The reality, however, is that gas infrastructure leaks at every point along the transmission process, from the wellhead, along the pipeline itself, at metering and valve stations en route, and at gas storage tanks. It's only when the sulfurous compound called mercaptan is added to local gas pipelines that we are able to detect the odor that we identify as a gas leak, though gas leaks have already occurred well before the mercaptan was added. Though voting yes on Article forty-two will not remove gas leaks in general, the bylaw will help ensure that the noxious emissions periodically generated by sites like the East Long Meadow Meter Station will be minimized at any Long Meadow facility due to the bylaw's mandate of monthly monitoring and inspection practices. A yes vote on Article forty-two will also help ensure that any lighting installed at the facility will have minimal glare and that noise at the site won't exceed an acceptable level. In order to minimize the impact of facility noise on neighboring residents, Article forty-two also proposes the possible construction of exhaust mufflers and sound barriers as a remedy. In addition, should the planning board receive a signed complaint about noise from a Long Meadow resident, Article forty-two requires that the gas company will, within forty-eight hours, have to continuously monitor the noise level for a seventy-two-hour period to document the situation. Article forty-two also deserves your vote as it's based on a similar bylaw change passed by the Massachusetts town of Rehoboth at their town meeting and was approved by the Attorney General as legitimate legislation. Our planning board also agrees, as they unanimously endorsed the bylaw at their meeting last week. But what about safety? How can we be certain that our safety will be maintained? We know all too well that within the past year, Long Meadow residents have experienced several neighborhood evacuations due to gas leaks, with similar evacuations occurring in Springfield and in Chicopee. We also remember the 2010 Worthington Street gas explosion that destroyed several downtown buildings near a daycare center in the city.
Ms. Morantz, could you wrap up?
I will. And in September, we witnessed the Merrimack Valley tragedy. Though it's not a guarantee of safety, Article forty-two is at least a step in the right direction for those of us concerned about the ongoing threat that gas infrastructure can pose. Let's see. Though a 2016 Synapse study determined that the need for natural gas will actually decrease in New England over the upcoming years, gas companies will undoubtedly persist in imposing expansion projects in communities like Long Meadow that don't need the additional supply. One more sentence. Until Long Meadow residents are empowered to prevent this expansion here, Article forty-two will make the gas companies accountable for their plans and ease the threat that their expansion projects pose for the health and safety of our town.
Thank you. Next. And again, try to keep remarks close to two minutes, please.
Elizabeth Ealem, I live at sixty-three Whitman Road, which is eight or nine doors down from the proposed metering station. We moved to Long Meadow because of the great schools, and both of my children would walk or skip or ride their bikes to and from the Wolf Swamp Road Elementary School, which is very close to the proposed metering station. My kids are older now, one's in Glenbrook, and one, well, is going to graduate from the high school. I think he's already graduated in his own mind. And he's also very active in Boy Scouts. Two months ago, Town Manager Stephen Crane spoke to his Boy Scout troop. The theme that month was citizenship and community involvement. And after the town manager had talked about what he wanted to talk about, he asked if there are any questions, and my teenage son said, "Yeah, what's this thing about a gas metering station going to be at the end of my block?" I was shocked. I had no idea he was paying attention to anything, and I realized I didn't know much about it either. After that Boy Scout meeting, my daughter was there that night, too. The three of us all drove to the end of Wolf Swamp Road, which turns into Denzlow when you get into East Long Meadow. It's where the new Bay Path College location is. There's a metering station at the end of that street, and I said, "Let's go see what these people are talking about." Now, this was at night. This was after the Boy Scout meeting, and we sat there, and we rolled down the windows, and instantly, our eyes started to burn, our throats started to burn. I was coughing and yelling at my children, "Roll up those windows!" But guess what? They couldn't hear me. It was that loud. This was at nine at night. This is in off-hours. There were no workers there. It stunk. It was really painful to breathe, and it was really loud. And as we drove away, my kids said, "Why did we see that thing?" I said, "Well, that's what's going to be built at the end of our block. That's what all the kids are going to walk past when they're going to school every day." And my kids said, "Are we ever going to be able to garden again?" And I said, "Am I ever going to be able to sell my house?" These are my concerns, and this is why I am in favor of Article forty-two. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, at the yellow mic. Yes, go ahead.
George Shea, seventy-three Ducksbury Lane. I move the question.
Sorry, the motion is out of order right now because we have a bylaw that requires two...five people to speak in favor and five to speak against before that motion is in order.
I thought...just a question, Madam, but I would certainly defer to you. I thought that was only if there was opposition lined up to speak to it. With what's here, I suggest that the moderator can certainly control that, but thank you.
I appreciate that. I would urge those standing in line to be mindful of the time. I think you're standing in the green line, and I just want to check on one thing.
Elizabeth Bone, thirty-four Elizabeth Circle. Really quick, just wanted to let everyone know that over ninety-six cities and towns in Massachusetts, with Boards of Health representing three-point-two-seven million Massachusetts residents, have signed a letter to Governor Baker asking for a moratorium on gas infrastructure expansion until a statewide study of the health impact of gas emissions can be conducted, and Long Meadow and surrounding towns are in this list. Massachusetts Medical Society has also publicly supported this call for a comprehensive health impact study to assess the human health risks of all existing and propose new or expanded natural gas infrastructures in Massachusetts, so I urge you to vote for forty-two.
Thank you. Next.
Gary Levine, two-oh-seven Williams Street. Okay, the proposed bylaw will regulate any gas-related infrastructure to be built in our town, and it's necessary for a number of reasons, many of which have been spoken to already. I just want to add a few things. Metering stations can also release pollutants in concentrated forms through blowdowns, releasing gas through the blowdown valve, creating a thirty-to-sixty-meter-high gas plume either by routine maintenance or accidentally. In November of 2017, such a blowdown occurred in Richmond, Massachusetts, lasting forty minutes, creating such a loud noise, residents thought that a military attack was underway. The blowdown filled a number of homes with the smell of gas. According to an article in USA Today, April tenth, 2015, by at least one measure, Tennessee Gas, which is proposing to build a gas metering station, has the worst safety record for its type of business, having reported more significant incidents to the Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration over the last decade than any other such entity. We're also painfully aware of the gas explosion that occurred in the Merrimack Valley last September. Seems that the work orders given by Columbia Gas to its employees were at fault, leading to this disaster. Massachusetts has a firm commitment to reduce our carbon footprint and to move to renewable energy. Given the track record of the two gas companies involved in the project, seems obvious that our town should hold them to the highest health and safety standards if the proposed project or any future gas project is built in Long Meadow. A yes vote will go a long way to ensuring that we can control and regulate such structures to ensure that they are as safe and healthy as possible now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any new information?
Very, very brief. Bruce Tallman, five-eight-five Wolf Swamp Road in Long Meadow. Just wanted to reiterate that, or in this form, that as probably most of us know, the Pioneer Valley is a very high rate of asthma and is named one of the most challenging places in the country for people with asthma or other respiratory illnesses to live. And we know that any gas facility built in Long Meadow is likely to be managed by or hooked up into by Columbia Gas, which has a poor track record of maintaining their infrastructures, we've noted with numerous gas leaks in this town and with explosions, as been mentioned earlier. So, I just want to reiterate whether you're for or against the metering station being built, you should vote yes on this article so it's regulated properly. Thank you.
Deborah Levy, one-six-two Williams Street. My first two paragraphs, that I'm not going to speak because people have already talked about it, concerns the neurotoxins and the negative effects of the release of the methane. I just want to say that adults have the capacity to understand complex issues such as those raised by the prospect of a metering station in town. Adults can attend informational meetings, and they have the power to vote to request that such structures be denied permits or limited in scope based on a multitude of factors such as impact on the environment or health and safety issues. But five- and six- and seven- and eight-year-olds get up in the morning, they brush their teeth, they get dressed, they eat breakfast, they kiss somebody goodbye, and happily go to school to learn to play and develop the decision-making skills that they will eventually need as adults. They do not possess the power to make their surroundings safe by limiting harmful byproducts released into the air they breathe. They do not have the power to determine the need for such a project or the danger to their health and the environment this plan will mean if it moves forward. This plan is on us. It's completely on us, as their parents, neighbors, and teachers. We have the responsibility to protect these little ones who cannot advocate for themselves, and the question is, how do we do this? By educating ourselves, asking hard questions, and not allowing secrecy to defeat us in the most important task we will ever have, to protect our children, all our children, until they know how to make informed decisions for themselves. And if we do not do this, who will?
Thank you. At the yellow microphone.
Peter Hayes, one-forty-four Wolf Swamp. This proposal talks about controlling, monitoring, and regulating, which basically assumes this will be built. Is there anything the town can do to prevent this from being built? I'm not sure who to ask, but...
Mr. Crane?
Maybe the town board.
Or the Select Board?
So, the short answer is probably not. The permitting for...there's two components to the project. One is a valve that Tennessee Gas would build. That is permitted by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, or FERC. The second part of this is the actual metering station, where there's a few processes that happen, including adding the odor, which would be Columbia Gas's project, and that is permitted by the Energy Facility Siting Board, which is a division of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities. So, the state and federal governments permit this. There are some provisions in the law that allow for local zoning laws that would require either permit to comply with local zoning laws, but they can also get a grant of preemption from either the federal or state government. But in terms of like the town, like not issuing some kind of permit or something like that to stop the project, no, nothing like that exists. I would just, for town meeting's benefit, the Select Board has retained an attorney who is an expert in utility issues, and we are receiving guidance to make sure we can protect the town's interests as best we can.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Yes, quickly.
I read in the paper that the town has first right of refusal to purchase the property that...I don't know if the sale has gone through, but I know that a letter of agreement's been signed. Doesn't the town have the ability to purchase that property and then zone it as something that cannot be built upon? And then zone it as something that cannot be built upon?
So, um, so again, the, we do have a first writ refusal under this thing called Article or Chapter 61. Uh, I'm not all that proficient in the legalities of it, but it would essentially mean that the town would have to meet the offer that has been extended, um, and that will require, um, a, in-law likelihood, a special town meeting and a dead-exclusion vote at, uh, by voters at a town election. Um, that said, that may not even prevent the project. It would just potentially prevent the project at that location. Um, and even then, there may be preemption, there may be the ability for the federal or state regulators to preempt the local action anyway. That, that's one of the things we are evaluating as we speak.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. At the green mic?
Good evening. My name is Kurt Friedman, 24 Ridge Road. As a registered professional engineer now in 12 states, I have provided previously expert witness testimony under oath to the states of Vermont, Connecticut, and Massachusetts on natural gas pipeline issues. Last week, I gave a presentation to our Long Meadow Planning Board on this issue and provided to them various codes and standards, including 49 CFR 192 and the ASME B 31.8S 2018, uh, documents. Natural gas pipelines are a very large responsibility, and I'm here not to be an advocate for the citizens' group, but to be an educator for our community based on my past professional experiences. Engineers in the fulfillment of their professional duties shall hold paramount the safety, health, and welfare of the public. Uh, that's our primary canon of ethics. Um, on December 31st, Governor Charlie Baker signed emergency legislation that requires licensed professional engineers to approve plans for engineering work associated with, uh, natural gas infrastructure in the Commonwealth. Uh, there's been significant standards established for, uh, safety setbacks for, um, high-pressure, uh, natural gas transmission lines. The particular metering station in question, its sole purpose is to rely to tapping for spur a 16-inch, 200 PSIG gas pipeline to transmit gas into the city of Springfield. It has no benefit whatsoever to the residents in Long Meadow. If there's a substantiated need for this metering station, perhaps, and it could be up to discussion, does this metering station, instead of being built where it's proposed, could find a location further to our west, perhaps closer to the Connecticut River, but still in an area which is environmentally recommended. Um, in looking at the path of natural gas transmission lines in Long Meadow, there's actually two. There's a 24-inch and a 30-inch. And these gas transmission lines, because of their size and pressure, um, create what's called a high-consequence area.
You're at two minutes.
Okay. I'll finish up briefly.
Thank you.
What this means is, is that the potential for great harm is there, and that's why the gas lines need to be controlled so specifically. So I will close. The subject metering station and additional 16-inch gas pipeline should not be in proximity to Wolf Swamp School, period. Um, the safety and health of our community are better protected with improved natural gas pipeline setback distances. The citizen petition, Article 42, is fully justified by established standards of good engineering practice. I encourage our community to support this amendment. Thank you.
Call the question.
Uh, Jesse Ryan, 117 Crescent Road. I would like to cite 3-317 and called question.
Okay. The motion to call the question, according to our bylaws, and, and I have to offer my apologies to Mr. Shea earlier. If fewer than five voters have asked to speak for or against the pending motion, the moderator may receive a motion to cut off debate after the voters who have asked to speak not to exceed five on either side have had the opportunity to do so. Therefore, I will allow the motion to call the question, seeing as no one has asked to speak against it, and I beg your forgiveness for, uh, failing to heed that earlier. The motion to call the question requires a two-thirds majority, however. All those in favor of calling the question, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. The motion to call the question is passed by two-thirds declaration, majority affirmative vote. We shall now come directly to a vote on the, the main motion. All those in favor of the main motion on Article 42, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion passes by two-thirds declaration, affirmative vote.
Article 32. I move that the town vote to establish a funding limit for the Town's Council of Aging Revolving Fund, with payments from the fund to be expended by the Director of the Council of Aging up to $85,000.
Motion's been made in second, and you may speak to it.
Effective November 7, 2016, as part of the Governor's Municipal Modernization Act, revolving funds created pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E1/2, as established in the town's bylaws, must have an annual expenditure limit set at the town annual meeting. This article sets the annual expenditure limit.
Any further discussion on Article, I'm sorry, Finance Committee? No, but we're not doing that one, okay? All those in, uh, could I ask for the people to sit down? I don't, I don't want to have people leaving as we're trying to vote here. Please. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article 33.
I move that the town vote to accept Park Drive.
You may speak to it.
Park Drive in Long Meadow has never been accepted despite being maintained by the town for many years, the section in Springfield being public ways. It is unknown why the street has never been accepted in the Long Meadow. DPW has inspected the road and determined that it meets the town's standards.
Any further discussion? This requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. 34, Mr. LaCusa.
I move to approve the article as written.
Motion's been made in second, and you may speak to it.
The Charter Review Committee, that was chaired by Dave Martell, spent a great deal of time reviewing our town charter, which has not been looked at and updated since 2007. You will see in the 13 sections of this article, the efforts of the committee to delete all the transitional provisions that are still included in the document. The proposed changes include updated language having to do with the transition from a three-member select board to a five-member select board with a strong town manager. State statutes regarding duties of the town in regards to assigned responsibilities are discussed. Dissemination of public information would be extended to include using modern technology to post information and the best location to place such information. Also, when the town fills a vacancy, the requirements, requirements of civil service law no longer apply. In addition, this article also looks at subtle changes, like being a registered voter as a condition of a resident running for public office. The duties and the responsibilities of the public works, parks, and recreation, and defining just what the town bulletin board really is. I move the article as written, or two-thirds of the vote is required.
Any further discussion on the motion in terms of the article? This requires a two-thirds vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. The motion passes, unanimous affirmative vote.
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 64G, Section 3A, as amended by Chapter 337 of the Acts of 2000, 2018, and to set the excise tax on short-term rentals at 6%.
Motion's been made in second, and you may speak to it.
A new law in Massachusetts allows municipalities to adopt local room occupancy, excise taxes of up to 6% of the total rent for short-term rentals. Example, Airbnb, VRBO. After July 1st, 2019, this will be allowed. The new law also allows municipalities to assess community impact fees of up to 3% on certain professionally managed short-term rentals and provide for local licensing registration legislation. The town is aware of a growing number of homes being offered for short-term rentals and currently lacks the regulatory resources to address any impacts to the community.
Any further discussion? This requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article 35, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed. Thank you. The motion passes by majority affirmative vote. Hold on a second. Article 36.
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 51, Section 16A, creating a four-member board of election commissioners that would be lawful successor of the current Board of Registars. The election commissioners would have all the same powers, rights, and duties and liabilities of the Board of Registars, except as otherwise provided by the statute.
Is there a second? Thank you. You speak to it.
The intent of changing the three-member board of registers to a four-member board of election commissioners is to increase the number of members to an even number in order to balance the membership equally of the two leading political parties in town. Currently, this cannot happen with an outnumber of election officials. The members of the Board of Registars in the office at the time of this acceptance shall be members of the Board, election commissioners, and shall serve until the expiration of their respective terms and until their successors are appointed or qualified.
Any further discussion? Yes.
Hi, James Ryan, 117 Crescent Road. Uh, point of inquiry, um, are there instances, and I'm not, I profess I'm not the most well-versed on this one, um, are there instances on this proposed board where a majority vote may need to be taken?
Mr. LaCusa, can you answer that?
Well, you know, there are times when they basically just supervise the vote counting, and so, uh, we've always had, uh, representation, representation of the Democrats and the Republicans on that. Um, I don't know if that answers your question.
Mr. Crane?
Yeah. Um, the short of it is, the reason why they use, there were other, it's a hangover or a vestige of when town clerks were elected and partisan, and so you would have two on either side, but one of those would include the town clerk. Our clerk is appointed, not elected, so thou, you, you want to have an even number of registrars, for oversight, not for voting. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion?
Jeff Klot, 1702 Long Meadow Street. If I'm correct, there is a plurality of independent voters registered in this town? Can somebody speak to the breakdown between those registered to a party and those not registered to a party?
Well, as far as unenrolled voters-
Mr. LaCusa?
Uh, we, right now, the town clerk is an unenrolled voter who supervises that process.
No, 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 excuse me. No, she is not a voter in the town of Long Meadow. No. The question was about how many independent voters there are.
Well, I guess part of it is that the unenrolled voters don't really have an organization, whereas Democrats and Republicans do.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator, I, I might not have heard the response correctly, but I didn't hear any numbers as to voters registered, answering my question, for parties and independent?
Mr. Crane?
I believe the registrations are either Democrat, Republican, or unenrolled. Yes, they don't register as an independent, and so unenrolled means you could go either way. Uh, and so I don't really, I don't, and I don't know the registration numbers for either of the parties, but there isn't an independent party for voter registration purposes, right?
Yes.
My name is Sandra Metz, and I am 171 Coventry Lane. I'm the chair of the Board of Registars currently, and I can, think I can answer the question. According to the statute, it says that, first of all, it says that the town may have up to four registrars if it cho, if it chooses to. And secondly, um, there are 17 political parties in the state of Massachusetts, and the law says the major ones. The major ones in the state are Republicans and Democrats. That's why you have these two parties that are chosen.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article 37.
I move that, I move that the town vote to amend Section 5-804E of the general bylaws of the town by inserting the following new wording to the end of the section.
Uh, uh, no, you didn't finish. If you'd like to, you can waive the reading of the article and just say, "I move in terms of the article."
Okay, I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? You may speak to it.
Okay. When the, if such hearing, the Long Meadow Building Demolition Committee determines that the structure is a significant structure and the proposed demolition would be detrimental to the historical or architectural heritage or resources of the town, then it shall file written notice with the findings of its determination to the applicant and the building commissioner, and no demolition permit shall be issued until nine months after the date of such determination by the Long Meadow, Long Meadow Building Demolition Committee, provided. Uh, however, that the committee may, for cause shown, reduce or delay the period. This amendment will give the Building Demolition Committee greater flexibility in determining the time period allowed for delays. The current language requires the committee to choose to delay demolition for either nine months or not at all. If approved, this would give the committee the flexibility to delay for periods shorter than nine months when the committee deems appropriate.
Yes, floor's open. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you. Stephen Weiss, 25 Hilltop Road. Uh, in, in addition to being on the Community Preservation Committee, I'm also one of the historical commissions designated on the demolition delay committee. Uh, and as Mr. Low pointed out, the bylaw provides that if the committee provides that a property is of historical significance, the issuance of a demolition, uh, permit can be delayed for nine months. Fortunately, we don't meet that often, uh, but this, in this past year, we did have a meeting about an application to demolish a barn in town. an application to demolish a barn in town. During the course of that, of our hearings and our meetings and attempting to balance the historical significance of the barn, the owner's needs and the owner's efforts to find a way to preserve it that already taken place, we considered asking or setting a delay of less than nine months. But on a closer reading of the bylaw, we came to the unfortunate conclusion that it appeared to be an all or nothing proposition unless, without a tortured analysis of the bylaw. So we've recommended, and the select board put on the warrant, that the bylaw be changed to give the committee some flexibility to request a delay of shorter than nine months, and we hope that the town meeting will approve the proposed amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Then we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion passes. Majority affirmative vote. Article 38.
I move the question as written.
Is that good enough?
The current bylaw refers to the functions and duties of two distinct town bodies, the Long Meadow Historic District Commission and the Long Meadow Historical Commission. The proposed version of the bylaw 2-805 contains language relating only to the Long Meadow Historic District Commission, while a future proposed bylaw 2-810 will contain language relating only to the Long Meadow Historical Commission. This necessary update will allow for more clarity in the bylaws relating to the functions of both commissions.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your yellow cards. The motion passes. Unanimous affirmative vote. Article 39.
I move the question as written.
You may speak to it.
Open burning, the burning of any material, outdoor releases a large amount of carbon monoxide and other gaseous and solid substances directly into the atmosphere. Open burning causes air pollution and aggravates respiratory problems. Open burning creates a smoke and odor nuisance, as well as a health threat to area residents. In densely populated areas such as Long Meadow, open burning is a concern with houses that are close together and large amounts of vegetation that create potential for rapid fire spread. Add to this concern that spring is usually the worst time of the year for a brush fire. When the snow pack recedes or before new grass emerges, last year's dead grass, leaves and wood are dangerous tinder. In the event one of these open burn fires get out of control, the potential for buildings being damaged or destroyed is great.
Any further discussion?
Greg Halpern, 24 Salem Road. I don't see a provision for outdoor fireplaces or fire pits in the bylaw or the motion. Are they exempted?
I would ask the fire chief to come. Mr. Dearborn?
John Dearborn, your fire chief. So those are considered contained fires because they're actually, be same as a fireplace or chimnea, so they don't meet the definition of the open burning statute. Does that make sense?
Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Item B, Kurt Freeman, 24 Ridge. Item B says, "Open burning conducted primarily for cooking purposes," and then just above, it says, "Open burning includes above or underground smoldering fires, including fires for the disposal of brush, cane, driftwood, forestry debris, grass, hay and leaves." This bylaw, okay, shall not apply to item B, "Open burning conducted primarily for cooking purposes." Does this mean that you can use brush and cane and driftwood for cooking purposes if you're just saying, I mean, I can understand using charcoal or briquettes or things, but it doesn't seem that you would want to use cooking, you'd be cooking with basically junk wood and brush. So I'd like to avoid that kind of confusion.
The answer is yes. You can use those materials if they're for the purpose of cooking, so.
Hmm, that doesn't make sense to me. It's just a source of pollution.
It's the answer to your, to the question.
I would like to propose an amendment, then, that, yes, primarily using, for cooking purposes is allowed, but you shouldn't be able to use driftwood, cane, debris, grass or hay for cooking.
Could you put that in writing?
Sure.
And bring it to the front?
I just want to let you know that people actually do cook with wood, for example, hot dogs or marshmallows.
I'm sorry, Ms. Bone, we'll wait until the motion is...
All right. I'm just saying that out there.
Thank you.
So you don't have to wonder.
You can come here and give me the motion.
Open burning conducted primarily for cooking purposes is allowed.
And sign your name. Hold on a second, we can go to there. So the amendment would be in Section B, after "open burning conducted primarily for cooking purposes," it would be amended that grass, hay and other debris not be used for cooking. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is made and seconded. You may speak to it. Sure.
I understand that people barbecue outside and for cooking use conventional fuels like briquettes or wood or even natural gas or propane, but fuels which are an obvious source of pollution shouldn't be allowed for cooking because it really has no societal benefit and is only going to adversely affect the health of the landowner or the abutter. And also, if somebody is open burning, they shouldn't be able to say, "Well, I threw a hot dog in the middle of my pile of leaves and debris," and say, "Hey, I'm cooking. It's okay. It's allowed." I think that would be contradictory to the intent of this policy. So I just want, I think what we all want is good health for our community. We want the freedom to do what we want and enjoy our land, but we shouldn't be, people shouldn't be able to use some type of loophole to abuse what's really for the betterment of the community.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Yes?
Hi. James Ryan, 117 Crescent Road. Sorry, coming on in. Former slash current Eagle Scout and looking in terms of various camping activities and looking at the realities of a lot of things that we may end up burning do end up polluting regardless, I'm just concerned as to what we're, what opportunities we're creating, what opportunities we're taking away from the development of youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Yes, I, I'm not a representative of the charcoal company, but...
Just state your name again, Mr. Lucusa.
Tom Lucusa, 1651 Long Meadow Street. But I, I just think we're going overboard here. I think that, you know, not many people are going to, if anyone's going to cook food outside, they're going to use charcoal. But if I wanted to use twigs that fall off my trees to start my charcoal fire, I don't think I should be limited, and I think it's just, we're going overboard here.
Yes, sir.
Stephen Metz, 171 Coventry Lane. I also oppose this, two reasons. First of all, it's very vague in general. I come from the Texas Panhandle, and we used other things for making fires outdoors. I won't tell you what they are, but they smell. So I think that if you try to include everything possible to use as fuel, that would be a very long list and probably not exclude something that you didn't want to keep in. Secondly, the amendment, the motion, the primary motion says predominantly used for cooking, and the scenario that Mr. Freeman illustrates is not used primarily for cooking. So I think this motion should be defeated. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment, the proposal to amend? The proposal to amend calls for a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your yellow cards. The motion to amend fails by majority, negative vote. We shall now come back to the discussion of the main motion under Article 39. Seeing none, that, seeing none, then we'll come directly to a vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 39, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed to the motion, yellow cards. Thank you. The motion passes. Majority affirmative vote. And hold on one moment, I just need to document this. Article 40.
I move the question as written.
The motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
This article is intended to ban the use of jake brake or engine brake, which refers to a function of a diesel engine, which involves the release of compressed air to assist a truck to slow down. This action makes a loud noise. Adding this section to the bylaws will give the town a means of enforcement and thereby reduce the unnecessary and objectionable noise that is disruptive to residents who live along frequently used truck routes.
Any further discussion?
Linda B.C., Converse Street. I want to speak in favor of this. Every single super-long tractor trailers on the planet comes right up Converse Street, and I want to tell you, everything shakes. So people should be aware that now that we've sent everybody through our neighborhoods, we should have some protection, especially in the middle of the night. So I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Chaim Kasavsky, 795 Converse Street. I'd like to know if banning the jake brakes will hinder the braking abilities of the trucks.
Who can answer that question? Mr. Crane?
Rabbi, no, it will not. And quite frankly, this is based on a bylaw that's used in a lot of the places, and when a complaint from someone from Converse Street came in about the jake brake noise, and it doesn't ban jake brakes, it just bans the noise-making, jake brake actually makes a silent engine brake. I was surprised the town of Long Meadow did not actually have this bylaw already on the books, so it's a common practice for municipalities. So, no, it won't affect them.
Yes?
Steve Wallman, Pine Wood Drive. I have some questions regarding enforcement of this because there are no definitions of excessive, loud, obnoxious, offensive or unusual. And without those definitions, how do you enforce it?
Chief?
Please, Chief. Do you want to speak to this?
Chief Stankewitz?
Please.
John Stankewitz, please, chief. Yeah, those enforcement practices are going to be up to the officer, and he observes or hears loud and obnoxious noise. He's going to be able to testify that if it goes according, if it's contested in court.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. If, for all those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion passes. Majority affirmative vote. Article 41.
I move the, the motion as written.
Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
This proposed change would allow for vehicles registered as commercial or bus that are no longer, that are no larger in size than vehicles often given, often driven for non-commercial use, such as three-quarter ton pickup trucks, to be parked in driveways overnight so long as the vehicle is registered in Long Meadow. The current bylaw is an enforcement challenge because it refers to not all lettered vehicles have commercial, because not all lettered vehicles have commercial registrations, and not all commercially registered vehicles are lettered. The requirements that the vehicles be registered in Long Meadow will ensure that the town receives excise tax on those vehicles that are regularly kept overnight in town. Report from the planning board required prior to the vote. Do we have something for the planning board?
Planning board recommendation?
Hi. I'm Don Holland, Chair of the Planning Board. The Planning Board, after a public hearing unanimously voted not to endorse this article. Reason given, there were several reasons by board members for their votes. There are certain professions, such as plumbers, who have trucks that are going to be over 7,000 pounds that are not going to be able to park in the garage. I have a neighbor who's got the, who drives the short bus for schools. He's not going to be able to park his bus in the garage. So for those reasons, the planning board members declined to endorse this article.
Thank you. Upper discussion? Yes?
Larry Goldberg, Redfern Drive. I actually had a bill in addition in this town when I wasn't in violation of the bylaw because other residents in town who'd gotten in trouble had basically ratted me out for something I wasn't doing wrong when Mark Denver was the building inspector. So I spent $60,000 to appease other residents in the town when I had a take-home commercial truck. At that time, Mark Denver told me that it was not based on the commercial plate, it was based on commercial lettering. The gentleman earlier was talking about commercial lettering, passenger plate, passenger vehicle, all that. The state law says if you have commercial lettering, you have to have a commercial plate. If you have a passenger plate and it's not registered to a business, that's okay. But there's multiple people in this town that are in violation of the current bylaw that is currently not being enforced. I can name off over 50 people in this town that have commercial trucks that don't belong that are fully lettered. There's buses in town, there's boats in town that is not being enforced. So to change it to this, it's not a question of changing it, it's still not going to be enforced because the people that enforce it don't enforce it. I believe that the way the law should be, and maybe I need to ask for an amendment, is that it's okay to have a one-ton pickup that has no lettering. The commercial plate means nothing. If a vehicle's backed in someone's driveway, I don't think people are looking at plates they're stalking their neighbors. If someone has a fully lettered truck that says Joe's Plumbing and it's at the end of the driveway, and it's a billboard saying that, that's what I oppose. If it can't fit in the garage, it shouldn't be in the driveway, whether it's a take-home truck or not. But a plain vehicle with a commercial plate does not offend me.
You need to clarify? Mr. Crane?
So just a couple of clarifications. You know, I think the, this really is pretty simple. The nature of vehicles used for work, the types of vehicles people drive, and people's First Amendment right to put whatever lettering they want on their vehicle, no matter what the registration says, are things that have evolved since this bylaw was first adopted sometime in the way back. All we're trying to do is to make it clearer so enforcement is simpler. It is an overnight violation. We do not have overnight inspections by our building officials, but I think the gentleman kind of put his finger on it. Most times, this... Most times this comes up, it's when one neighbor wants to complain about another neighbor, and the issues rarely have to do with what type of vehicles in the driveway. But they cite the bylaw as the reason for the complaint. And if it's larger than, you know, an F-150 or an F-250, then it's not allowed, even under the change in the bylaw. This is pretty simple. I drive an F-150. I can park it in my driveway overnight. Someone who drives the exact same truck but for a commercial plate can't. I could also take my passenger vehicle licensed truck and letter the heck out of it, say whatever I want on the side. And I can park it in my driveway overnight, but someone who has, who earns his living and lives in Long Meadow and pays his taxes, or she pays their taxes and has the lettering inside the vehicle, cannot. And it just, like I said, I think it's an inadequate bylaw that needs updating clarification. That was the intent.
If I could speak again?
There's somebody else who's, who needs to speak. Can you speak after him? Yes?
I think you're missing the point. Tom Keller, 38, Emerson Road. The problem with the change to this bylaw is it opens up the door for somebody who could have a cab company across the street from you. Could have three, four, five cabs, could have a delivery service, could have 10 repair trucks, as long as they're small. You're opening up the door for commercial businesses to conduct it in a residential area. Bad news.
At the green microphone? Are you standing at the green?
Yes. Go ahead. Hello. Jonathan David, Lorenz Street, Long Meadow. I've been dealing with two building inspectors over the last 10 years on this issue. Mr. Crane just really articulated it very well. It's, it's pretty simple here. I registered my business in 2008. You can do that in Long Meadow. You can register a home-based business, right? I brought my vehicles to my house. I got a call from Mark Denver two weeks later. He informed me, "Oh, I can't do that." I said, "I'm sorry, Mark." So I went and got a lot in Long Meadow where I keep my vehicles for the last 10 years. My truck is registered to me. I own my truck. I insure it here in this town, and since I bought it, I pay the town excise tax every year. So it's about being fair that I live and I work in this town. I pay excise tax on my vehicle. I register my vehicle to my correct address. I should be able to park in my driveway. These vehicles that are under discussion are commonly-accepted F-150s, F-250s. These are things that come and go like you see every day. And as Stephen said, the nature of vehicles have changed. So the current bylaw, whether you are a pharmaceutical rep and you drive a Ford Fusion and you have a commercial plate, you cannot park in your driveway. So any pharmaceutical rep, there's some questions around many of the federal employees who live in town. FBI agents, ATF agents, Homeland Security agents, they all do not have personal plates. If you're given a truck, or a car, or any sort of vehicle, you cannot park that vehicle if it's over seven, any, any commercially-tagged vehicle right now has to be in a garage if you have signature. The 7,000 G V W is kind of a bit of a mistake here, only because a Chevy Suburban is 7,400 pounds. So that means if you drive, or you register, or you run any sort of business, that you can't park in your own driveway. The idea that this notion is going to allow businesses to be run out of homes, they already are. Now, there are a ton of zoning bylaws that have to say adequate parking. So no, you can't park four limousines in a two-car driveway. There's tons of regulations on, on what you can do in your house, what you can put, how many spaces you have. This motion is about one, one simple thing, and it's been an issue that I've dealt with, like I said, two building inspectors, chiefs of police, and it really opens up the door for residents to give other residents a hard time because of the nature of their car. I have a simple pickup truck, and because of three letters on my license plate, C-O-M, I've been having to deal with a neighbor who's been harassing me for 10 years now. And that's why we find us. So this is about one simple thing. It's about us working, living in town. We do what we're supposed to. We register our cars, we pay our taxes, we should be able to park in our driveway. Thank you.
At the red light. Yes, Mr. Goldberg? Mr. Goldberg?
Okay. What the last gentleman said, I kind of agree with him about, and I know him, where his truck is parked. His truck not being lettered with a commercial plate, I don't think offends anybody. I think that what they're asking for a motion now on this amendment is wrong, and I think what the old bylaw is, like Mr. Crane already said, is also old. But I think it should be a new amendment. I don't think that a one-ton pickup that looks like a three-quarter-ton, or even looks like a half-ton to somebody that knows nothing about vehicles, other than how to get in, turn the key, and put gas in it. I also think that as far as commercial lettering and that, that's actually a police issue. There's a lot of vehicles in this town that have lettering, or even come into town from other towns, that are dump trucks, that have a commercial plate that don't have lettering that are supposed to. That's a $500 ticket per the state of Massachusetts for having a commercial vehicle without lettering, if it's registered to a business. So we're getting this into a whole other scenario of proper violations and enforcing the laws. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that if someone has a pickup at their house, I don't care if it's a van, a pickup, that's single rear wheel with nothing more than five wheels touching the ground, it's okay, as long as it doesn't have commercial lettering. I have two neighbors within a half-mile radius of my house, a father and a son that own a business, not in Long Meadow. They both bring home their trucks. They don't fit in their garage, and I don't need to see their advertising on a daily basis for their business. And they have other ones in town for other employees. And it doesn't matter the size or the weight. Commercial lettering is the big issue. I'm not concerned about a pickup that has a commercial plate. I'm not really looking at the plate. It's the billboard, the free advertising that shouldn't be in town. I spent $60,000 because somebody complained.
Yes, sir. Mr. Friedman?
Kurt Friedman, 24 Ridge. As a registered professional engineer, I have a business in my home, which is a perfectly, it's perfectly allowed activity in my home to have that kind of business. I have no traffic. It's just me. I have two vehicles. One is privately registered. The other one is commercially registered, happens to be a Volvo Cross Country. I use that for my business travel. And it has commercial plates. Usually it's garage, but sometimes it's left out. I support this because I was looking to have this matter resolved. I shouldn't feel like I'm breaking the law because I'm parking my commercially-registered vehicle in my driveway overnight or outside. And so I support this. I understand some of the other concerns and issues that were raised, and maybe there might be some exceptions to this that could be heard.
...town and has nothing to do with where an offending vehicle is registered or about collecting excise taxes. The article has no broad-based support. It is not a citizen's petition, and out of the 10 town board members that have had to vote on it to get it to this point, seven of the 10 have voted against it. It is untrue that the current bylaw is an enforcement challenge. The current bylaw relies on three simple definitions, all covered by Massachusetts General Law and the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. The requested change would require a truck scale and a police officer with access to the Registry of Motor Vehicles database at every investigation of a complaint. So how does this change possibly make it easier? At best, the town is only reactionary to bylaw violation complaints and takes no proactive measures. So if you're accepting of the commercial vehicles in your neighborhood, then nothing will change, even under the current bylaw. However, there are some neighborhoods, including mine, where businesses and residents' commercial vehicles and the junk they cart around and store have made a mess and devalued property values. So it is for these instances that the bylaw must stay as is and be enforced upon complaint to protect everyone's quality of life and property value. The proposed change puts no limit on the number of vehicles that can be on a property, and most importantly, does not take into account anything but the vehicle itself. A big part of the problem, which is addressed by the Mass Department of Transportation's definition, which is used in the existing bylaw but is missing in the proposed change, is not only the aesthetic of the truck itself, but the tools and equipment it carries, the construction debris and yard waste in the bed, what the vehicle hauls, and the rest of the junk that it brings home and stores on the property. I strongly urge everyone to vote no on this because if you don't, you could end up with the mess we have across from our house across from yours.
Thank you. Yes?
Andrea Chason, 236 Creshus Circle. I'm wondering if we can call the question. I think we've had five for and five against.
We have had five against the question. We have had two in favor of the question.
My name's Dean Cipriani. I live at 58 West Road, Long Meadow, on the river. Drive down Emerson Road. There are a couple vehicles that are on that street that actually run businesses with commercial plates. I've had 1,000 runs of 10-wheelers filling in the wetlands every fall. I have hundreds of vehicles filling in the wetlands, which is a sign that's 11 by 11 feet. It says, "No filling in wetlands." I've been living there since 1983. It is all agricultural land. I've got businesses at the end of my street. I have no problem with commercial vehicles with people making a living. I drive a small vehicle full of tools and dragging equipment home all the time. The town dump is right over the railroad tracks from my house, people filling in the wetlands with their debris and burying it in the wetlands. I go to the dump with stuff, and I bring stuff home. I'm in favor of this bill. Commercial vehicles, people have to make a living, and I work out of a trunk. So sometimes you got to make a living, so I'm in favor of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I have a question. Depending on whether this is passed-
Name again is?
Larry Goldberg.
Larry Goldberg.
I'd like to know how the town officials plan on enforcing it, whether it stays the old way or goes to the new way, because there was definitely a lack of enforcement with the commercial motor vehicles that are currently in the town.
So the question of how will the enforcement happen? Mr. Crane?
Either with the current bylaw or with a new bylaw.
So again, the violation occurs overnight. Our building officials, our building inspector does not work overnight. So normally, we get tipped off by a neighbor, and we follow up on, when we get those complaints, we do follow up on them and investigate and notify. If you've got a commercial vehicle and you had a neighbor who's called, you've gotten a message or a visit from our building commissioner about this. So I imagine that it'll pretty much be the same, unless we want to add a full-time overnight shift building inspector to patrol this.
I don't think that's the answer.
If we cannot get into a back-and-forth, that'd be great. Do you have any further questions?
I do, because I know it's not being enforced.
Okay, well, so-
And that's why I want to again ask. It's not a question of the building inspector working nights.
This is the third time that you've spoken.
Yeah.
We're going to let the other people have a chance to speak.
Kurt Friedman, just a brief follow-up to the previous speaker who also spoke before the planning board last week. He spoke against this bylaw, against this Warren article. But if this Warren article is supported tonight, then this language would then help him. He shouldn't be opposed to this because his concerns were that, that he had landscaping trucks, multiple vehicle, multiple axle vehicles, parking. So this would prohibit those type of vehicles, and this would then help his situation, not hurt it. So although he spoke against it, he really should have spoken in favor. Thank you.
Yes?
Margaret Rockus, 67, Shadyside Drive. When my husband and I bought our house on Shadyside, it had been owned by a builder who had a BMW convertible and another very expensive car. When we did the final walkthrough, there had been snow when we first looked at the house. The final walkthrough, we were able to go into the backyard where there was a shed. The shed was piled high with fluorescent bulbs, which are universal waste. There were oil filters and used debris that would also qualify as hazardous waste in Massachusetts. He didn't have a commercial vehicle in his home, but that was where he stored his waste. We were able to get him to take it away by threatening to not close on the house. And my point is, people, I agree with those who say people need to make a living. Just because somebody has a commercial plate and has a commercial vehicle parked in their driveway doesn't mean they are, that they are degrading the value of the neighborhood. They are taxpayers. If there is a problem with what they are leaving behind or leaving in their front yard, we have ways to deal with that. I personally like to see the lettering so that I can, I can use town people to do work in my home. The Yellow Pages are gone. It's nice to run by somebody's house and see a truck with lettering. I do apologize, I feel bad for the gentleman who spent $60,000 because he was being harassed, but I think it's time for us to look and say, is this being petty? And/or do we have other ways of dealing with people who have sloppy habits and use other bylaws to take care of those problems?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that my comments were not misconstrued. I was against it at the planning board, and I'm against it tonight. So I appreciate your comments, Kurt, but I can speak for myself.
Let's just speak, yeah. Just speak to me.
Okay. So I'm against it at the planning board. They voted against it, five-nothing. I'm against it tonight as well. And this doesn't help anything. This just allows people that live in town to make a mess of the town, not everybody. But it's still a mess of the town.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
This requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your yellow cards. All those opposed, please raise your yellow cards. Oh, I'm in doubt. We're going to count this. Let me just try this one more time for a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, raise your cards. Ah, thanks a lot. All those opposed, raise your cards. The motion fails by two-thirds negative vote. Motion to dissolve is in order. A motion to dissolve has been made. Is there a second? All those in favor of dissolving the annual town meeting, raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your yellow cards. I declare the 2019 special annual town meeting dissolved.